We're going to go ahead and call this meeting of the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors to order. Let the record reflect that all the supervisors are present, along with the county attorney and our county administrator. Please, we're going to have the colors presented by the Powhatan Sheriff's Office. Let's please rise for that.
Go, water! Colors, all. Blue, please!
Everybody say the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, move! Forward, watch!
Thank you. At this time in our agenda, we are going to proceed with our Purple Heart Ceremony. Would the people that are here for that, please come down to the podium?
I'm not going to go.
Can we move them down?
No. Ted's going up.
Okay, are you reading the resolution or?
We don't.
We read the resolution and presented that to, to the chapter earlier.
Okay.
So we'll.
Okay, well, we're thrilled to be here, we're grateful to be here, and we're honored to be here to represent the Military Order of the Purple Heart in Powhatan County. And you all have made a resolution that declares Powhatan a Purple Heart County, which means you support the veterans of Purple Heart, Purple Heart recipients and all veterans. And that is what our chapter is about. We support veterans and veterans causes. We're all Purple Heart recipients, as you see here. We have an associate member, the rest of us are, don't have any WWII vets, don't have any Korean, but we got a lot of Vietnam folks here. And we're all happy to be here and we're all happy to celebrate the resolution. So I thank you for that. And also, since you gave us this resolution, we have a plaque for you all. It says, "The Military Order of the Purple Heart Special Recognition Award is bestowed with pride to Powhatan County, Virginia, for your dedication and support honoring America's combat wounded veterans, becoming the Purple Heart County." So this is yours, I'm going to deliver it to you, sir. That's my speech.
As the son of a Vietnam veteran and grandson of a WWII veteran, it gives me an extra bit of pride and appreciation for this, and we'll display this proudly in the county administration building. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Comments from the board?
Thank you very much.
Go ahead, Mr. Melton, if you'd like to make some comments.
Just for the record, we will also have some plaques that will be placed throughout the county in different parking areas for recipients of the Purple Heart to have special parking. That's part of being a Purple Heart community, we're looking forward to putting those up. And any other veterans who are out there, thank you for your service to our country.
Andrew, real quickly, I would like to thank you for your service and your sacrifice to this country, gentlemen. Thank you.
Myself as well. As a veteran, I definitely want to thank you for your service. I served a little over 13 years, but never had to pin a Purple Heart on. I guess I should be grateful for that, but I'm even more grateful for those who sacrificed in that way to preserve our country. And so I'd like to thank all of them, including the Marines.
We'll move on to any requests to postpone agenda items, additions, deletions, or changes in the order. Mr. Williams?
Madam Chair, I'd like to amend the agenda to add a discussion on derelict homes and possible paths going forward as how we can address this issue in the county, working with the county attorney.
Would you like to put that under new business?
Madam Chair, I'll leave it to your discretion.
I think we'll make, go ahead and make that 13C.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I have one that might affect 13, if you want to wait and maybe re-letter A, B, C. Do you want me to propose that now?
Sure thing.
Okay. Under 13, just so we don't get confused, there are two items related to taxes. 13A, I'm not proposing a change to, that's fixing the calendar year, personal property tax rates, I don't want to change anything there. But 13B, I think all five of us can agree, we probably want to make a change there after some discussion with the county administrator, et cetera. It reads, "Discussion of Authorization to Advertise Publication of the Fiscal Year 2020 Budget Related Tax Rates and the Proposed Capital Improvement Program for FY 2020-2024." I don't think we're quite ready for primetime on this, and to advertise would be a bit premature because we, all of us know that we've got the proposal still hanging out there for a possible tax increase for the fire and rescue portion of the budget, which would impact this. As we discussed, I think last meeting, we need to take action on the school board side, but we technically have till June 30th on the non-school board side, and our next meeting is the 11th of April. And I've been in discussion with Ted that perhaps on the 11th, we can come ready with our proposals and ready to hash out a discussion about the fire and rescue department thoroughly so that we know what we're dealing with and fold it into the complete budget. So that's a long reasoning, so I would suggest that we strike, and please back me up, Mr. Norvig, strike all of 13B, it looks like, but keep 13A. And that would be putting off advertising to the public the budget for now, and obviously related tax rates and the CIP.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I thought the proposed calendar that was presented to us on the 14th actually had a little bit of different philosophy on that, and that was to be able to advertise a budget that fulfilled our obligations to the schools, but did defer the county, the county government's ad till a later date. Because I think in, if I remember correctly, we needed to do, advertise tonight so that schools could, we could meet the advertising requirements for the schools to be able to issue their contracts, if I remember correctly.
Right. That's what I said, Mr. Melton, is not touching the school side. So I don't even know how you do that procedurally, but that's exactly what we discussed last time. So I am proposing to move ahead with the school board side, and we need to be done with that by the beginning of May for their contracts. So not touching the school board side whatsoever.
Well, I think that this was exactly what 13B was meant to contain, a discussion. And that's what this has become. So this calendar was given to us without any chance for us to, what the suggested, the a.
Is that the one from Charla, or originally?
314.
That's fine.
Without any chance for us to speak on the public record about this proposed calendar. So I think that 13B was just to have a discussion. And at that time, we may say, let's do what you just suggested, but I think it's important that we have the opportunity to have discussion.
As long as it's discussion only, that's fine.
That's why it says discussion of.
Okay.
So, so Mr. Norvig's proposal to eliminate it is not eliminated, just a discussion item as 13B. Correct?
That's right.
Okay, thank you. Just want to understand.
Is that, everybody's clear? All righty.
So I'll move that we approve the proposed agenda, amended, agenda, amended, amended agenda, one of those ways, to add 13C that Mr. Williams proposed.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, moving on. This will be our first public comment period. We invite members of the public to share their thoughts on the matters and issues that are germane to county business. If you're here to speak on an item on tonight's agenda that is having a public hearing, you must wait and share your thoughts during that hearing on each specific item. We will not be having a public hearing on the RC agenda item, so if you would like to speak about the RC agenda item, that must be done at this public hearing.
Public comment.
Public comment period, I'm sorry. This is not a forum for political campaigning or promoting a business. Please keep your comments focused on the issues and subject matter over which this board has responsibility, and please keep your comments to three minutes if you were speaking as an individual, and five minutes if you were representing a group. After some discussion after the last meeting, we will adhere strictly to the three-minute time period. So if the buzzer goes off and you're speaking, we ask that you stop speaking and, and return to your seat. So that staff can get the name and address correct in the minutes, please sign in and state your name and address for the record. The sign-in sheet is on the corner. And if you intend to speak, please go ahead and, and line up and be ready. Mr. Green?
Thank you, ma'am. Floyd Green, 2047 Hancock Road. As most of you know, I managed a communication system for our county from the 80s up until I retired from county service about two years ago. I wanted to say I'm fully support, well, I support the proposal, it's before you later in the meeting, for the purchase of the land mobile radio system. I do want to give you a quick history and one concern that I have with it. This actually began talking about the system back under County Administrator Bishop. When County Administrator Alma Hodge came on board, he wanted to know, well, what is this going to be, cost us into our future capital improvement? So I basically came up with two different proposed systems back then. One, a basic upgrade of the current technology system that we had at the time, and the cost estimated was between $9 and $14 million for that system. The more modern public safety system that all the other regions, localities in Richmond areas have gone to, estimated cost of that was in the 14 to 21, $22 million range. So, and then when Pat Wiler came on board, she fully supported the idea that we didn't need it to upgrade our current system or replace our soon-to-be obsolete, equipment-wise system. But problem was she, contrary to my recommendation, she chose the $9 million figure for that system, from basically transpose the lower figure into the, the, the system that our county really needs. I believe the system that's being proposed will be not any worse than we currently have. Little, personally, little eerie of the coverage that it's going to provide into the system. And my concern is, and just, just a heads up for, for the board for the future, and future members of board that sit in your seats, I expect that public safety organizations are going to be coming back to you and, once the system is operational, and asking for additional upgrades, additional towers or additional heights on the towers that we have in, in the county. I'm hoping I'm wrong, I really, really do hope I'm wrong. You know, I'm, most of you know I'm as tight on the money in this county as I've always been. So, but again, I just wanted to give you a heads up, and we've talked about the towers and the needs of towers and the elevates, heights of the towers in the past, and this is just continuing with that. That's all. Thank you.
Please sign in. I believe you're speaking for a group, so feel free to take five minutes.
I'll give them a second to get that pulled up. My name is Anna Pantos, and I am a Central District 4H Ambassador, and I'm also a member of the local 4H here in Powhatan. And I'm here to speak on behalf of, and in regards to, the Powhatan County Fair this The Powhatan County Fair this year is celebrating the 100th anniversary, and the first fair was opened in 1919 by a member of the Virginia Cooperative Extension, William Walton. And just a little bit of brief history, the, in 1960 was the separation of the fairs, and the fair that was held at the Rescue Squad was shut down at that point in time. 1987 is the first time that the Powhatan High School Marching Band and a youth gospel choir performed at the opening ceremony. 2005 is when the Powhatan County Fair was actually recognized by the Board of Supervisors as the official county fair. And 2018 was the first appearance of a livestock show in decades at the fair, and this was actually put on by our local 4H Livestock Club. What you can expect to see this year is, of course, midway rides, everybody's favorite. We'll have the second annual Powhatan 4H poultry and rabbit show. We'll have a 4H livestock petting zoo and 4H pony rides, a photography, art, and pie baking contest, and live music. What's new this year, a Wild West show, and of course, the pie contest. And there will also be a quilting exhibit this year held in the main building. And moving on to a little bit of why the fair is so important to not only the youth, but to me, is what it does for our Powhatan youth, for the involvement that we have. We were given the opportunity by the fair board that we could plan and set up an entire sector of the fair. So we put on our own livestock show, we had demonstrations, we had the animals for the, the public to really come and get involved in, to see what the 4H program has to offer. And it really helps us for the fair to let us come and present to the public what it is that we do. There's just some more pictures that we have, but then I'd like to also take a second and talk about how specifically the fair has helped me. I had the opportunity to attend the Virginia Fair Board Contest for a scholarship, where I presented this very presentation. I also had to do extemporaneous public speaking, prepared public speaking, and write an essay. This was a contest, and we were judged not only by officials, but also by our fellow contestants. And I actually placed sixth, receiving a $500 scholarship to put towards the college of my choice. And I would not have been able to do that if I had not been offered the opportunity to work with our fair, and I very much looking forward to doing again this year, and hope that you guys would be willing to support us in that as well.
What's the date of the fair, Anna?
I believe that the fair is going to be May 17th through 19th, May 17th through 19th. And it will be a Friday through Sunday.
I think it's always the third weekend in May?
I believe so, yes.
Great. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I would like to pass up to the board. There's enough there, there's six there. My name is Ken Parton, I represent Joe and Mary Whitney, who have an unaddressed parcel at Branch Forest and Anderson Highway. This parcel is engaged right now, it is an RC parcel, of course, they would like to, I'm speaking on their behalf because they're not in the state, they would like to go on record as not supporting the RC change. And we would like to talk about the comprehensive plan, which at this point is planning for commercial up to Branch Forest. They happen to be on the opposite side of Branch Forest, where it will be an RR designation in the comprehensive plan, and there's a whole corridor there on Route 60. From that point forward, couple miles, I believe, that will be RR that we would like to see, would support the changes to that in the comprehensive plan to a, a commercial or CC designation. That is, you know, right across the street now, there is commercial development that had occurred and has suspended, and we'd like to see that intersection and, and this piece of property progress with a CC devoted. And that's basically where I am, I'd like to make it aware to the board tonight. And just go on record, I appreciate your time.
Good evening. My name is Vernell Strader, and I live on Bell Road. I have said in these meetings and have listened to human beings have harsh, rude words towards other human beings. I cannot imagine how building houses for the working-class people in Powhatan can create such a feeling. It reminds me of Matthew 22:39, "Love your neighbors as you love yourself." I have also listened to buzzwords such as Richmond, Chesterfield, and schools. I want to address, I want to add some more definition to these buzzwords. Richmond still have old money. Chesterfield, some people moved because they couldn't no longer afford to live there. And schools, Powhatan residents do not pay 100% of the cost for the schools. I began to think about why will housing for the working-class population bring to, coming to Powhatan, would bring so much confusion and hate? What is the problem? What is the difference between the population we have now and the population that housing may bring? Remember, Powhatan already have, we have liars, we have thieves, we have murderers, our roads are full of trash, many homes have a lot of unsightly items on them, and some of our businesses also display such items. Some homes need major repairs. We have a social service agency, health department, we have a free clinic for the poor, the schools have children with special needs, violence and racism is in there, we have teenage pregnancy and single mothers, there are sex offenders, battered women, homeless people, drug-addicted people, and drug sellers in Powhatan. And yes, we have African-Americans, Africans, Caribbean's, Hispanics, Asians, and Middle Easterners. So may God have mercy on us for not wanting to love our neighbors or even to respect them.
Don Rissmeyer, 35, 23, Richards Run, the president of the Branchway Forest Homeowners Association. So it's interesting to see my entrance mentioned in the public comment period, but my comments are more about the RC zoning issue. I just want to thank the board first off for tackling the RC zoning issue. It's been an issue for over 30 years for the county, and I've seen some of the paperwork which clearly describes how it's been a failed attempt for economic development, and I applaud the board for looking at that issue. I want to say I strongly support eliminating the RC zoning because it's proven to be unsuccessful. I think nodal development, which the comp plan promotes, is going to be a really good success story for the county in the future. And so I look forward to seeing the comp plan move forward and get adopted as well. I do strongly prefer the conversion to the current land use. I think that the community isn't fully aware of the impacts of the different scenarios of what RC may or may not become. And so without a public comment period, I can say it would be great to see the, the current land use as the zoning designation for those 900 or so parcels. It's going to really make an impact on the footprint of the county, what decision is made for the zoning. And I believe Andrew and others from the staff have spoken about this in the past, that it would go to the current land use on the property. I also saw some of the paperwork about the appeals process, which I think would be a great way for a property owner to come to the board and talk to you about their current land use, or if they need some other sort of zoning designation, they could do that. So that was a great thing to give to the property owners, that opportunity, as well as the waiving of the application fees for rezoning. And I really, I was at the last board meeting, and there was a lot of talk about not harming the property owners, and I really feel like that rezoning application process is the way to go. That's going to give them an opportunity to understand the comp plan, what the highest and best use of the property is, to talk to the Planning Commission and to talk to the board, and to make sure that it fits within the goals of the comp plan going forward. So I think that's really the key, is that, that rezoning application process is going to be a really powerful tool for those property owners when they do come up with a plan of development. In the past with the RC zoning, it was sort of an economic development play, so there was a 500-foot depth, nobody really had any plans to develop anything, and so that's pretty much what we saw. And the county invested in water and sewer systems and a lot of other things for that development that was supposed to come that never arrived. So it's really important that if we're looking at county investments and county needs in the future, that the rezoning applications are a big part of that process, so that people could come in and understand how things fit and what would be a good use, and, and to be in accordance with the comp plan. Because without the RC zoning issue addressed, the comp plan cannot go forward. So, thank you for your time.
Okay, you could have two more minutes if you would like, since you're head of the homeowners' association.
Thank you for your hard work, and good luck.
I'll sign in at the conclusion. Rick Butcher, 1803 Cook Road, Powhatan, District 5, proudly represented by Carson Tucker, and have many good friends on the board. And I too appreciate your work, the work that the board has done, and also the work of the Planning Commission. The, the proposal of waiving the fees for zoning of, of RC for five years, really isn't a long enough window, because the new board that'll take, take y'all's seats in January, we all know pretty much who the players will be for, for that board. And so really, as you're saying, for the next four years anyway, would be that you're waiving the zoning fees for a board that's pretty much stacked against any development with RC. And so I would say that you only have that one year, the year 2024 to 2025, to make your application. So I would propose to you to extend that from 2025 to 2030 and give us a full 10 years in the RC zoning. My next, my next statement deals with an ordinance before you, I think it is 2019-15, is that tonight? Dealing with trash?
Yes, dumb peep. Yes, dumb peep.
The third, after the third, whereas, I would submit to you to add the word tires.
We will have a hearing on that at the end, so you can...
I apologize.
That's okay.
Hello, everyone. My name is Shanda Littlefield. I actually traveled here from Maryland. I do that quite often because my great-grandparents have a property on Route 60 on Anderson Highway. And they own that property and pass it on to their children, which were my grandparents, my great-aunts and uncles, and now my mother and my aunt. And my great-aunt, who's not here, she's 89-years-old, still owns the little house on Route 60 by the light. She's very passionate about her property. She has lots of pride in it, as well as my mother and my aunt. And the proposal to make it change into just agricultural is kind of disheartening for her because she has hopes that we will build on the property. You know, she doesn't have children, but we're her great nieces and nephews. And so us coming here today was, you know, something that we felt we needed to do. My property is on, right on Route 60. It's between Map 41 and 72 and Map 41 and 38. It's 2307 Anderson Highway. And anyway, I came here because I'm passionate about it. I sell real estate in the Maryland area. And I think you should give property owners their right to decide whether or not, what they want their property to be zoned as. And if they fill out an application to have it rezoned based on their personal use, especially since they've owned the property for a very long time, they should have the opportunity to make that decision, instead of just doing a blanket decision for everyone up and down the road. Our family owns about 103 acres there. So this is not just one little piece. You know, it's quite a bit of property. So we do have plans for it. We do want to do development on it, or build houses for ourselves and our families, for our children, things like that. So we don't want necessarily to have to be zoned as agricultural. I don't know if we'll ever grow crops. My grandfather did. He grew everything you can think of. But that's not really where things are going to for the younger generation. So I just came here today with my aunt and with my father, just to, you know, give a heads up because there are people paying attention. Just because you don't necessarily see people at the property, maybe the house looks a little rundown. We are here, we are alive, we are well, and we are paying attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Don't forget to sign in.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Board members, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Taylor Goodman. I serve as a volunteer at Huguenot Volunteer Fire Department, Powhatan Company, too. Just wanted to make a statement about the radio system that's being discussed tonight. You know, that some of those figures that are in there, as Mr. Green indicated earlier, came from many, many years of development over time, and some really good projected figures during that time. Tom Nolan and his work group have done an exhaustive amount of work to make sure that the radio system is going to meet our needs and has done an exhaustive amount of work as well to make sure that it was very fairly done, giving different vendors the opportunity to come in and propose systems that would meet our, not only our current needs, but certainly our needs into the future as we anticipate, you know, additional growth, additional population, and things like that throughout the county. So I would want to publicly commend Tom and his group for the work that they've done, but also ask that the board provide the support to the new system. The system that we're on currently, as I have mentioned in the past, we're literally buying used parts from other jurisdictions, just trying to Band-Aid our system, just so it provides coverage. And unfortunately, we're at the end, and we can't continue to do that. So hopefully, we'll be able to move forward on this project very, very soon. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rhonda Harris. I live in Powhatan on 3 Bridge Road. I just wanted to stand and say thank you to our ambassador for all the hard work that she's done at the fair and making it such a wonderful success. It was really a funny story because I go to the fair convention in the homestead every year. And I had to do a recommendation letter for her, and it was the easiest thing I'd ever done because I had so much information to include. But I actually didn't know that I was writing that recommendation letter so that she could compete for the scholarship at the homestead. So I'm there looking for vendors and everything, and her mother says, "Rhonda, are you at the homestead?" I was like, "Yeah." She says, "So am I." I was like, "Huh?" So it was really exciting to wind up in the same place, celebrating the fair. This is our 100 years, and we're really excited about all the new opportunities and partnerships that we have with the community. And we're looking forward to seeing everyone there. So I want to thank you again and all the other people who have helped us throughout the 100 years making this a lasting institution. It's been a wonderful journey for all of us, and I just want to thank everybody for all that you've done with us, for us. And we're looking forward to many, many more years to come. And then my second thing is the RC. I didn't actually have a comment about it until he said that the information was unsuccessful. The current plan was unsuccessful. But it's really not completely true because it's hard to judge where something is successful until you give it time to prove it. And when people are, in terms of economic development, you have to do market research and make sure that the area is viable for economic development. And therefore, you can't judge its success until it's ripe for development. And right now, Powhatan is ripe for development. So when you go toward changing the RC plan in a blanket change like that, you limit economic development for landowners who now had the opportunity, which was not presented, a decade ago. So we've had a RC code that just couldn't work because we didn't have enough people. We didn't, you know, the economy wasn't pushing it. But now the economy is, and then you really could see if it was not successful. Right now, you can't really judge that. So I didn't want that talking point to stand because it's really not accurate. It's just not. But most importantly, thank you, Ambassador.
Ambassador of the board, Don Silberbauer, 1426 Donovan Mill Lane, Powhatan. And I'll sign in when I'm finished. I didn't prepare anything tonight, but I'm listening to some of these numbers that have been discussed this evening about the radio system. And I know that I believe in the next couple of years, the school board will be looking for several million dollars for additions to the schools. I know that we're talking about a million dollars or so for supplement for paid employees for fire and rescue. And with the radio system, somewhere between a $9 and $20 million number. Yeah, I'm talking perception here. I'm not talking about hard and fair. I'm talking about just things I've just heard. If I kind of add those together, I'm talking somewhere in the neighborhood of $15 to $20 million. Right now, our debt-to-expense ratio is 13.7% with a cap of 15%. So I'm not sure in the next couple of years how that's going to change with the requirement for all this additional money. Now, I'm sure in the next weeks, months, or year, a lot of this will be cleared up. But right now, from a perception standpoint, it sounds like we're going to be on the hook for a lot of money. And certainly, services, emergency services are key and critical to this county. So just again, perception, perception quite often becomes reality. So I am just concerned that we are talking about a lot of money, and I'm not sure where it's all going to come from, considering we already got a fair amount of debt. Anyway, thank you for listening.
Any other comments? All righty. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close this public comment period. And Mr. Nolan, that takes us into the Public Safety Communications Oath and Qualifications. Consent agenda, did I skip that?
Yep.
Well, we all consent, right? I'm sorry. The consent agenda, number nine.
Madam Chairman, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second?
I'll second that.
All righty. Is that all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Needs a roll call. It's got some resolutions in it.
Oh.
Aye.
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 Thank you. Sorry about that.
Matt, if you're ready?
I am ready whenever you are.
Oh, this is swearing in very... We have opportunity, oh, you must stand up. Thank you. Before you hear, we have the three newest members of the Powhatan Communications Department, Public Safety Communications Department. I wanted to highlight the importance of the training and professionalism they have. They're part of a team, they're part of the public safety team. We work with the sheriff's office and fire EMS volunteers and career staff constantly. It's improving our performance, improving our standards, and making sure that we understand that these individuals come in and are constantly monitored, they're constantly quality assurance. We want to do it speed, we want to do it accurately, we want to do it with empathy. And you have some great people here in front of you, people with fire EMS experience, young and old. And I'm very proud to be part of this group and opportunity for them to show the importance of the dedication requirements they're making night and day, 24/7, 365. So I've asked Mr. Dobbs to come in and ask the swearing men to show that stress the importance of that job and function they provide us.
Ladies, if you will just raise your right hand, and you do not have to repeat after me, so I will go fast. I, Jennifer Lynch, Madison Ward, and Heather Sauer do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Commonwealth of Virginia, and will faithfully and impartially discharge all of the duties incumbent upon me as a communications officer of the Powhatan County Public Safety Communications Department according to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for your service. Thank you very much for all you do.
You'll come back. Mr. Mountain has to first.
Let me go in?
Yes, sir, we don't have any appointments.
Could I have, excuse me, Mr. Hughes come down from Powhatan Volunteer Rescue Squad? Any other members would like to come down, or family would like to come down? Appreciate it. Come on down. First of all, it's an honor to be presenting this to you and having the volunteers here to recognize you. This is a proclamation recognizing Henry Gil Hughes on his retirement from the Powhatan Volunteer Rescue Squad. Whereas Henry Gil Hughes has been a volunteer for the Powhatan County Volunteer Rescue Squad for 15 years and is a life member, and whereas Mr. Hughes has been an EMT, an enhanced EMT, among other certificates he has held or currently holds, and whereas Mr. Hughes has served in many positions at the Rescue Squad, including that of president, and whereas Mr. Hughes has mentored and helped train numerous members, has worked with the county to ensure the Rescue Squad has the equipment needed to support Powhatan County, including new trucks, monitors, and equipment. And whereas Mr. Hughes has taken the time to voice, to be a voice for the volunteers by expressing their concerns and needs to the county board of supervisors and to the county administrator. And whereas Mr. Hughes has been a Rescue Squad, has, excuse me, I apologize, has put the Rescue Squad as a high priority in his life, devoting thousands of hours over the years, and always wanted to be the best volunteer for Powhatan County. And whereas he has sacrificed his family time due to volunteering, and it is time for Gil to enjoy life outside of Rescue Squad. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the board of supervisors of Powhatan this day commends Mr. Hughes for selfish volunteerism and calls for all citizens to join in wishing him a happy and productive retirement. This is adopted by the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors on March 25th. This is a form of motion.
Second.
All in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye.
Would you like to make any comments? You don't have to.
No, I'd just say it's been a privilege being able to give back to my community. And I'd recommend if anybody has a desire to volunteer, you contact the Rescue Squad and help them out. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You can hang that on the wall by your fishing rods, hopefully.
By your surfboard.
Madam Chairman, if I may. Gil, we really appreciate 15 years of service to this county. As I was telling some folks the other night, if there's one thing this county has been built on and sustains us is volunteers. So thank you so much for your service.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, we'll have another proclamation. Can we have Mr. Timberlake, are you coming down? About, I think I saw Ms. Allen, are you here? Come on down. And please come on down. How are you? Good. Thanks for coming.
Jordan, is this your last year doing this with us?
It is.
It's a sad day in...
Okay, this is a proclamation recognizing February 17th through the 23rd, 2019, is FFA Week, and March 17th through the 23rd, 2019, is Agricultural Literacy Week. Whereas the FFA in agricultural education provides a strong foundation for the youth of Powhatan and the future of the food, fiber, and natural resource systems. And whereas the FFA promotes premier leadership and personal growth to ensure a steady supply of young professionals to meet the growing demands in science, technology, and many business careers related to the agricultural industry. And whereas the FFA and Agricultural Literacy Week are an opportunity to acknowledge the contribution of the Virginia Cooperative Extension Service, Monocentsoil and Water Conservation, Farm Bureau, and FFA alumni as advocates for agricultural and forestry. And whereas agriculture is the Commonwealth's largest industry with an economic impact of $70 billion annually, and employment of over 334,000 workers. And whereas Virginia is experiencing record export sales to meet global demands for food, beverages, fiber, and wood products. And whereas, on average, Virginia farmers feed his or her own family plus an additional 165 people here and around the globe. And whereas during Agricultural Literacy Week, FFA, Farm Bureau, and other volunteers will read stories at elementary schools about Virginia farms that provide our food from farm to table. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors designate the week of February 17th through the 23rd, 2019, as FFA Week, and March 17th through the 23rd, 2019, as Agricultural Literacy Week in our community. And calls upon Powhatan County citizens to also congratulate and recognize FFA member students, leaders, and the organizations for their contributions toward making a positive difference in Powhatan County and in America's primary industry, agriculture. This is a form of motion.
And second? All in favor?
All in favor, I guess.
All of us, yes.
We'll present this to you. Congratulations. Thank you. Would you like to say anything? You don't have to, but you can.
She could talk all night.
That's okay. Then people won't have to hear from us, so...
For those of you that don't know me, my name is Jordan Winnall, and I'm a senior at Powhatan High School. I joined the FFA as soon as I could in the seventh grade, started judging horses, livestock, doing some forestry and soils along the way. And I just wanted to thank you guys and the community of Powhatan for your continued support in agriculture education, be it through FFA, 4-H, or generally in the classroom. It's really crucial that we keep these skills up because it's more than just farming. Agriculture impacts us every day, from the food we eat to the clothes that we wear. So I want to thank you guys again for that continued support.
We have two more proclamations this evening. Anybody else joining us up here?
Oh, yes, they're coming.
Okay. This is a proclamation recognizing National Telecommunicators Week and the telecommunicators of Powhatan County Public Safety Communications 911 Center.
of Powhatan County Public Safety Communications 911 Center. Whereas, since the first 911 call was made 51 years ago, last month, we all truly came to understand that calling this number has provided us immediate help at any time, day or night, across our county, and whereas the prompt response of sheriff's deputies, firefighters, and emergency medical personnel is critical to the protection of life and the preservation of property, and whereas the safety of our sheriff's deputies, firefighters, and emergency medical personnel is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Powhatan County Emergency Communications Center, and whereas public safety communication officers with Powhatan County's Public Safety Department are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services, and are the single vital link for our deputies, firefighters, and emergency services personnel through monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety, and whereas the public safety communication officers have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, rescue of trapped victims, and treatment of injured or ill patients, and whereas each public safety communication officer has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their duties over the past year. Now therefore, the Board of Supervisors of Powhatan County does hereby proclaim the week of April 14th through the 20th, 2019 as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, and joins in honoring the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our county and citizens safe. That is in the form of a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you.
Bravo.
Thank you for calling, Dave.
Thank you. I want to make sure that everybody understands that some of the people in this, in front of me, right behind me, are part of our team, and the public safety team, we have people that are, that are fire volunteers, EMS volunteers, and help the community day in, day out. They really care for what we do and how we do it. I'm so proud to be part of this group, and thank you for your service.
Okay. Do you guys want to stay up here? Have the whole crew make this next presentation? Okay. All righty. It's not a surprise, so I guess I'll just go ahead and announce the name, right? Okay. Proclamation recognizing Mrs. Janice Pelchat for meritorious service to Powhatan County Public Safety Communications 911 Center. Whereas Mrs. Janice Pelchat is a citizen volunteer who started working with the Powhatan Fire Department in May of 2018 to assist with clerical and administrative work, Mrs. Pelchat has worked diligently with the fire administration on updating their training and certification records, and whereas in May of 2018, the County Board of Supervisors approved an ordinance directly related to implementation of a next-generation 911 service, the updated security alarm policy now requires the registration of all security alarms to the sheriff's office and/or designee, and whereas soon after this ordinance changed, the PSC department started receiving dozens and now hundreds of new security alarm contact information forms, and whereas Mrs. Pelchat volunteered to assist with the review and data entry of the security alarm documents, Mrs. Pelchat immediately started working with PSC supervisors to learn how to use the CAD system and improve the workflow process. Mrs. Pelchat ensured that we had no duplication of effort and timely notification back to the citizen owner, that we received the new form and it was entered accordingly. Mrs. Pelchat has reviewed and entered over 900 security forms since August of 2018, and whereas Mrs. Pelchat is dedicated and extremely detailed person and embraces the administrative workload that includes tasks that can be repetitive and tedious, and whereas due to Mrs. Pelchat's willingness to donate her time and talents to the fire, EMS, and PSC departments, we are able to update our vital records, implement an NG 911 program, and keep our communications officers working at the console, answering emergency calls from our citizens, and dispatching first responders without delay. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of Powhatan County does hereby proclaim that Mrs. Janice Pelchat receive a certificate of meritorious service and joins in honoring her diligence and professionalism in keeping our county and citizens safe. That's in the form of a motion.
Second, Matt.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I have Chief Singer next to me, and I don't, I'm not afraid to say when I see volunteer opportunities, I'm not afraid to go ahead and, well, steal that. Sorry, Sheriff. But Ms. Janice has been wonderful, and she's always there, always when they ask for great assistance, and when she said, "I can do this," she proved she can do just about anything. Her talent skills are amazing, and we are very fortunate in this county to have people that want to volunteer and help out all aspects of public safety, and thank you. This is a little token here says, "Yes, nice, isn't it?" Yeah. I didn't make it, though. This is 2018 Powhatan County 911 Center volunteer service, Ms. Janice Pelchat. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, just like saying, Ms. Janice came to us through the recruitment retention program. She said, "Can't ride a fire truck, don't want to get on an ambulance, but do you have anything around the office I can do?" And she's been there since May, helping us out to get all of our records straightened out and helping Tom get all the CAD stuff straightened out, so she's a great help to us, and thank you very much.
Okay. Well, that'll take us into our old business, and that's a bonded projects update is what we'll start with. Is that you, Mr. Voorhees?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. You've got in your packet the report on the bonded projects update. What I'm happy to report here is we, we had two projects that were sort of the last projects of the, of the big bundle that the board approved a few years ago. Last year, we had our most significant completions, the middle school and the fleet maintenance facility, very large projects that the school, school board ran, and, and those came to successful conclusion, and then we had, have the final two big projects, the courthouse expansion and the radio system. And tonight, we're, we're very excited to, to, to be talking about the radio system and, and awarding that to, to go to construction. That'll, that'll take a couple, three years to come to fruition in terms of construction, but the, the courthouse project is imminent, so we're now starting to talk about ribbon-cutting ceremonies, finally, and if you have other questions, I think you can see the physical conclusion of this project as you drive by, the, the screening and fencing is down, and it's starting to shape up particularly with the, the weather, the landscaping's starting to come in. If the board has any questions, we'll be, be happy to answer those, but we'll, we'll be talking about a ribbon-cutting date and getting that information to you, and, and some sort of public, uh, open house is, is anticipated. So good news on, on that front. Anything else you'd like to add, Ms. Carter, about this? I know you're happy to get this one wrapped up.
Just a comment, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
So I am too glad to see the courthouse project wrap up as it is in my district, and people have been very vocal about being patient, but yet not being patient, and it did run over for quite a period of time. But I guess the ribbon-cutting is wonderful, but what I'm more happy with is that we'll create a safer environment for our deputies and our citizenry as we transport people into that facility, and then the ability for a 911 command center to be more, I don't want to, at least it's not sitting in closets, so to speak. So I think that's exciting. Ribbon cut's great, but I think the safety issues and, and the concerns for work conditions were far outweighed any other ribbon-cutting, so thank you.
Any other comments?
When I think when the public gets a chance to see this setting and how professional it, it's all set up and properly outfitted, folks will really appreciate the difference between, as Supervisor Melton said, the sort of closet under the stairs situation. I don't know that folks really realize the, the circumstances that we ask our employees to work in, so I know that they'll be able to be even more efficient and effective, so I appreciate that.
All righty. Mr. Voorhees, are you going to handle the LMR, or is Tom going to make that presentation?
I'm going to ask Mr. Nolan to come up and tee this up for us. And you have a presentation in your, in your board pack. One of the slides in there speaks to the best and final offer that we've been awaiting, and we do have that information in hand, and that, that'll be, be discussed with you.
Thank you, sir, board. I'm, this is a great opportunity for me to express all my appreciation for the team we put together on this project, a very critical, necessary project that we had started long before I got here, and obviously some of the speakers prior to that discussed that. I have some people on the board, our core team here is Chief Singer, Adam Sadler, behind me, John Wood, and a consultant, Wayne Stack, and Sidney Gillespie. All of us worked diligently on trying to make sure we provided the best product and best proposal, picked the best proposal and best system for today and for future needs. If you could, next slide, please.
I know Tom would do the, I'm sorry, I need to leave for a call, but we fully support everything we got going on here. We've had a great group that's really done a core job of getting it down. Tom, say that.
Thank you. So what you have here is a project procurement history. I promise you, this is eight, eight slides. I will not go to PowerPoint by death. It's going to be an opportunity for us to have questions and answers, and I hope that this little procurement history here will provide you a little bit of understanding where we, how we got, where we started from and how we got where we are today. The Alamar LAMBOB radio system needs assessment was originally conducted by CDI. It's a consulting firm. It was started off in earnest in August of 2015. In that, you've already heard some assessments, where the project ranged, and the needs assessment's between nine and $19 million. The board, I believe this board took some action on that, and I believe, I appreciate that. The opportunity for us to look at those and look at the needs assessment is a comprehensive needs system that addressed many of the issues that we wanted to look at and make sure we had, we put in our RFP, request for proposals. The, the needs assessment was presented in December of 2015, and I believe the funding took place in May of 2016, over three years ago now. Unfortunately, that consultant was replaced because of lack of support, and the lead principal consultant was left that organization, and we had to move forward with another group, and you'll hear from the group principal partner, principal consultant tonight, Mr. Wayne Stack. What we did is we looked forward to putting the good team in, already mentioned that, and we put 5,000 lines of specs, 5,000 requirements into the RFP. The RFP was comprehensive. It looked at all kinds of aspects, including in-building solutions, digital audio quality, voice quality, and system strength. We received two vendor proposals in April. The compliant responses, you can see here in front of you, 15 to 36 million, were obviously outside of our budget. We had to ask for a value engineer. We did, we received it. The value engineer came in more in line, however, much of that value engineer did not necessarily include greenfield sites, meaning new sites, sites that we have to, some coverage requirements that we need now and in the future. We had some vendor oral presentations in July and August. We gave opportunity for the vendors to speak to us about their proposal and their strength of proposal. We did a dual diligence and existing system visits through September and October. We did some tower site planning, where we looked at different towers available throughout the county. I think we had over 65 different variations of that. We looked at multiple different ways of making sure that we can balance the need of coverage, because coverage is king. Without coverage, basically what's happening here is you're building a highway, a radio highway. And when you build that, you want to build it to make sure we can, of all the corners and best we can, all different segments of the county. It was difficult, we had some board presentations, and we tried to balance that out with a site design, and you can hear about that in shortly. Negotiations in earnest really started in October, and we started wrapping it up here in 2019, March, and this is where we are today. Next slide, please. At this point, I'm going to ask Mr. Wayne Stack to give his professional analysis on where we got and how we, how we can move forward on what we received, as far as the funding, as far as the overall proposals, and how we can de-scope it to fall in line with our budget.
Thank you, Tom. Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Wayne Stack. I am a managing consultant with Alteris Technology Partners headquartered in Richmond, Virginia. We are a small consultancy that specializes in communications and communications systems. I have been, I have been the primary project manager for Alteris for the Powhatan project since April of 2017, and so I've seen the entire procurement process through this. Alteris developed, as Tom mentioned, a 5,000-line spreadsheet, which was a comprehensive technical requirements specification, and we required any vendors that were interested to respond to that. The, the vendors that were allowed to respond to that were vetted by their capability to respond to that, and we received qualifications documents from numerous vendors. We determined that only two of the documents that we received represented vendors that were qualified to provide this system, which is a very extensive, very complicated, and needs to be a very meticulously designed and implemented system. We received those two proposals from the two vendors, as, as Tom mentioned, and unfortunately, the amount that were attached to those proposals were outside of the county budget. So we had to look at, how do we get the most bang for the buck, so to speak, with this? So we started looking at, where are opportunities to de-scope some of what we had hoped to get based on the least painful reductions in capability of the system? So we basically started with an eight-site proposal at $12.1 million. We looked at, and we'll have to, there we go. The first thing we looked at was the coverage. We determined that the reduction of one of the tower sites wouldn't have a strong effect on the coverage of the system, specifically the tower site in Tobacco Ville. We reshifted several towers, and with that, we were able to offer good coverage in Tobacco Ville. Not some of the in-building coverage to the levels that we had hoped, but, but the, the fiscal constraint was such that we had no choice. So we de-scoped Tobacco Ville, making it a seven-site system. In addition, we removed what is termed the inner subsystem interface, which is equipment and systems that allow interoperability between different agencies. We determined that with the interoperability that we will have with this system and the neighboring organizations, that right now there wasn't a necessity for the ISI, and we reduced that. That can always be procured in the future should the situation in the county change and the county decide that it is desirable to have that capability. At this point, it's, it's not necessary, so we de-scope that. One of the more painful de-scopes was geographically redundant master site. A master site is basically the computerized brain of the radio system. All of the traffic is directed by the master site. If the master site goes down, it is a significant reduction in capability of the system for the duration of the event that takes the master site down. There are fallback modes for that, and it is a graceful degradation of capability, but we had hoped to have a geographically redundant master site. And an example of why that would be necessary, if for some reason... And an example of why that would be necessary, if for some reason, the dispatch center or the master site, whether it's at the dispatch center or not, the master site were to catch fire, or whether there was sabotage or something like that, there would be a geographically diverted, or even a tornado comes through and flattens the master site. There would be another master site ready to take over at a moment's noses, hot standby, automatically switch, that would just pick up and continue operation without interruption. Unfortunately, that was a significant expense, and we had to de-scope that. And then similarly, we had hoped to be able to provide maintenance training for county personnel, but we determined that the county at this time doesn't staff maintenance personnel capable of maintaining the system. Some counties, for instance, the Richmond Capital Region Counties and the City of Richmond have radio shops, and they have people on staff who repair the radios, who repair the system, who administer the system. That's not the case currently in Powhatan, so we elected to remove the maintenance training. All of that was a pretty significant reduction. We do have to state, though, that whereas we could reduce another tower site, making it a six-tower site system, at that juncture, we don't have the luxury of shifting sites around to cover the gaps that would be created by the removal of that site. So that's why the asterisk at the bottom here. If we were to remove another site from the system, coverage would start to take a significant hit, and the removal of the one site, it wasn't as significant as it could have been. So speaking of coverage, this is a diagram of the expected coverage. It's a computerized model of all of the parameters that go into each of the sites, the height of the tower, the power of the base stations, the losses and gains in the antenna transmission system, as well as the terrain. All of that is provided by the federal government, national terrain databases, and there are many programs that will do this. Each of the vendors has its own program for that. We use at Alteris, a commercially available program that is highly regarded for that. This document is, this diagram is generated by Alteris. It does not represent the guaranteed coverage by the recommended vendor, but it actually is more stringent than what the recommended vendor has provided, in that what we show here is coverage that is not as good as what the recommended vendor is prepared to guarantee to the county. We have, in the contractual wording that is still being worked out, we have wording in there that makes the vendor responsible. If they don't provide the coverage that they are guaranteeing in the contract, then the vendor is responsible at its own expense to augment the system in any way that is necessary to provide that coverage. Right. So what we have showing here, and just as a brief orientation without getting into the weeds, we see several colors on here. You'll notice around the tower sites are colors of yellow. That is the heaviest signal level from the towers, logically so, because it is closest to the towers. And in those, we're looking at 20 dB buildings, meaning signal is strong enough to penetrate a building that has 20 decibels of loss, a significant building. The, I guess it's orange or pink, I'm not sure how it's showing up on the monitor, is 11 dB buildings. So that is heavily constructed residence or a typical strip mall-type building at 11 dB. And you can see from this that it is predicted to be substantially throughout the county. Again, the yellow is stronger than that. The red or pink is the 11 dB. And then finally, the blue underneath it is, operates, represents a portable radio, a handheld radio on the street, meaning not inside a building, not inside a vehicle. We don't do mobiles in this, vehicular radios, because they're so much more powerful and they have such a better antenna than the portable radios, that if it shows this for a portable radio, the mobile radio will blanket the area, so we don't even show it. So that's what this seven-site design does. We are comfortable and we are encouraged by the vendors' willingness to guarantee in the contract that they will provide coverage, and the coverage maps that the vendor has provided indicates that they will substantially exceed the diagram you see here. And I guess unless there are questions, I'll turn it back to Tom for the remainder of the presentation.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Just a quick question or maybe a reminder. As I prepared for this, I reread the initial report we had from CDI and then the consultants that kind of came, brought us. If I remember correctly, less than 50% of the time, EMS and fire were able to communicate inside of a building. So what is the number? Do we have a number that you can share with us that would give a level of comfort that we're much better than 50% of the time? And I know that we talked about height of towers, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But I'm just curious, is that something?
We can provide that data to you. We do have pretty voluminous data in that regard. It does get a little complicated, but we can provide, if you'd like, a document that would explain that. We can develop a document that would explain that and provide those percentages. We talk in terms of coverage reliability. In other words, if someone keys their radio, what is, how often will they complete a communications effort, as opposed to not be able to communicate in one direction or the other? Because bidirectional is what has to happen. It's no good if a firefighter can hear the base station, the dispatch center, but can't talk back to the dispatch center. Or similarly, if the dispatch center can hear a sheriff's deputy, but the sheriff's deputy can't hear the dispatch center. So we can certainly develop that for you. We have those numbers. We'll put it in terms that are not so technical and...
Significantly improved from that.
Yes, yes.
Well, that was one of the major concerns that I, you know, when we first talked about this, was the, that less than 50% of the time, there could be a deputy with a situation in the house, and he may be able to get out, or he may not be able to get out. Or firefighter be there and, or need additional EMS support but couldn't call for it, so.
We are talking in the terms of approaching 90%. So quite a difference in that.
Thank you.
Wayne, what I did is I pulled back the, I pulled back the covers to make sure that we understand, one, we're looking at the economic zones, enterprise zones, they have the highest penetration levels on purpose. We purposely designed it that way for the denser buildings and potential denser buildings.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to make sure I adjusted, try to reduce the feedback. We did request for the vendor choice right now. We did ask for best and final. The number you see in front of you, the 9.7, is for the infrastructure. It's for the system. It's not for the radios, the mobiles, associations, not for the schools, and not for the fire pagers, although we do, I do believe, we have opportunity to find some money in there should we have the coverage we want to use the monies for the fire paging. The system lifecycle is a 20-year projection. What we did to bring the numbers more in line from the CDI report, which was about 360 when they first looked at that three years ago, it's a 444. We de-scoped the Network Operations Center and the User Maintenance Replacement Program. All that means is that the radio we're buying is a highly ruggedized radio with less than 1% chances of not being able to fix. The radio is very, very ruggedized. We anticipate at $16,000 to $20,000 a year, we can go ahead and replace those radios if we need to without having a insurance policy on something we may probably most likely will not likely use. So that brings us, the 9.7 gives us the highway, highway, the coverage, coverage is critical. And that puts, it gives us that opportunity to do so. Mr. Voorhees and I have discussed all the methods and considerations for funding the subscribers or terminals.
A board member said, this gets us the base system that we've all been talking about for some years and brings us into compliance with the latest standard, which is known as the P-25, Public Safety Radio Standard. We were hoping that we would actually be able to fund the mobiles and portables at the same time. What we, we were not able to do that within the project budget. If you'll recall, we did have an additional one and a half million in the proposed financing that we recently completed. That would have given us perhaps some room to do that, but that ultimately, that financing was pared back. The good news is, we're going to have well over two years of time to resolve this issue and figure out how we're paying for those, because the contract implementation schedule is significantly in excess of 24 months. We're still negotiating whether it's, you know, 24, 30, 32, somewhere in that range. So we just have to be mindful that in the next, in the third year out, in order to get the subscriber units, we'll have to be financing that through our CIP. We're having some conversations about how to do that. We do have a proposal on how to do that with the radio vendor. We're going to look at all options. We don't need to solve that problem in the next year or two. We do have to have that problem solved as we get out there. We also think that we've given you the worst-case scenario on the cost. That's based on a fully requested list of desired units for all vehicles and having folks with mobiles and portables. We think we will be able to reduce that number. We want to make sure we put a marker out there that showed kind of the total need, but to be realistic, these are not inexpensive, and so some of the questions about exactly how many portables will be deployed. I think the days of some folks who might not be very active in their responses for a particular agency, and, but still wanting to be connected by having a radio, might have been reasonable when those radios weren't that expensive, but now that they are very expensive, you might have to settle for having a personal scanner to keep up with that information and not have a county-issued radio. So we think that number's going to come down, and we also think that the number for the schools could be leveraged a little differently. There are some lower-end units from other vendors that would still have functional capability but are a lower cost, and we'll be working with the schools to determine if those are appropriate for their non-public safety needs. Certainly, when they have public safety needs, we'll want them to have the same tools that our public safety professionals have. So that sort of outlines what our strategy is. We're very comfortable that we have a quality product that will last the county for decades to come. We've, I want to certainly note Tom's leadership on this and all those who contributed to the team to get us to this point. We were able to bring you a proposal that gets us a quality product that will significantly improve public safety communications in the county within the budget that we have. And at this point, I'll turn it back over to Tom for any final thoughts.
Yes, sir, there's one more page I want to go to, lease tower cost projections. By moving forward on the seven-site design, we did reduce our reoccurring costs. No accident, I also should point out, there's no accident required tonight for the maintenance piece associated to a Lambour Radio Project. The Huguenot Tower is a tower we currently use. We do have some proper space on that. That proper space is at different heights, and we may have to purchase a different rad or a different section of that. However, we do have an opportunity to put our antennas on there for no cost. The ground space could be a cost issue associated to that, and we're still in negotiations with that. The Dorset Crown Castle originally came in significantly higher than that number. When we explained our situation and the fact that we needed for public safety, they did reduce that number, and it's a good tower and a location east of the county. It's an opportunity for us to get on the top of the tower, and that's, it's expensive over the lifespan of the tower, but it provides us a great opportunity for great coverage. The Trent Home, our Apex Tower, is the one that's 200 feet. We do have the top space and ground space, and you see the zero cost associated to that. And the last one, the Prison Farm, it's a Monty Road, is a tower that we're working with Department of Corrections on right now, to work with them to determine if we can have some interoperability with them, and also within interoperability, get on the tower for significantly reduced cost. Right now, VITA has the tower, is turning it over to Department of Corrections, we hope. And as we move forward on that contract negotiations, we will continue to work on trying to reduce that reoccurring cost. At this time, any questions, please?
Yeah, any questions?
I have two basic questions, and I think the first one, Ted, is something you commented on, and either one of you can answer this probably, but use the word "strategy" when talking about the mobile radios, and good news is, two years away, plus a little probably. Are we including in that strategy not the current number of radios or even a slight reduction for, let's say, volunteers that don't show up as often or whatnot? Are we including in that strategy the fact that Powhatan may actually grow, requiring more deputies, more fire and rescue, et cetera? Or are we assuming what we have now and maybe a little less? And that's for either one.
I'll take this first opportunity. I do believe the Sheriff's Office has worked diligently with us in making sure that whatever radio they purchase, including the shoulder mics and accessories, are the exact number, and they had a, and I could actually add them right now. If Adam, you have anything for to add on that?
And what I'm looking for, Adam, is I don't want this board to be given the impression there's a certain number, and we're pretty certain of that, and then find out that, oops, we grew, and we're actually going to need 10% more money or whatnot. So how accurate is this number, I guess is what I'm driving at, for two years hence?
I'd say it's pretty accurate. You know, we built in a few spare radios in case there was one that was to go down, but we did not build in some elaborate amount of radios so we can give out radios to our part-time employees. That would be something that they would come in, check out at the communication center, utilize for the day that they're working, whatever specific job, and then check back in. So we did not go into providing portables for all of our part-time employees. We did, like I said, put in enough to be able to take care of our needs for our officers now, and if we were to add a few officers down the road, but nothing significant, not like 10 or 15 extra radios.
No big bump coming our way in two years or anything that you see?
That's all up to you, gentlemen and lady, Chairman.
Thanks, Adam.
On whether we're going to have any big bump of calls for service or anything like that.
I got you. Okay, thanks for answering that question. And my second question is about coverage.
Yes, sir.
And again, anybody can pitch in. Down at the Richmond Regional Planning District Commission, there's a lot of discussion about regional cooperation, sharing resources, two or three counties getting together to buy certain items and getting it cheaper, therefore, you know, volume discount. Coverage, I was interested when I saw that map with the yellow and the pink and blue on there. A lot of the less coverage, shall we say, is on the peripheries, you know, on the Goochlin periphery up kind of by the Maiden's Bridge. I noticed District Four, District Two, down on the Apo and the Chesterfield County line is where there seems to be a little bit worse coverage, and we're fairly solid in the middle. So have we approached Amelia County, Chesterfield County, Cumberland County, Goochlin County to see if there's any cooperation there? And if not, is that a possibility with the knowledge you have of their systems? Can we sort of lease something or pay back in kind coverage so that we close those gaps coming from regional cooperation?
I think, excellent question. I think the first point I should make is that these radios can be multi-band radios, meaning that we can use the radios by switching the radio to a different band and utilize their towers when we're in their jurisdiction or closer, if their coverage is better than ours especially. And we're going to ask for interoperability in that essence or that point for Chesterfield, Goochlin, Amelia, and we'll have the type of radios that can utilize their coverage if it meets our needs better than ours. One point I should make also is that the yellow and in-building doesn't reflect portable on the street. We had different maps that we can show related to that that has a significant more coverage portable on the street on the hip, and that coverage is, it looks a lot better than that one. I would argue or support the presentation in that what we're looking at there is mostly in-building, and that doesn't mean that you will not have it in the less-than-yellow. It may be the building, depending on the building, we may have some issues, not all the time.
And just following up on that, I might understand from Mr. Stack, thank you for your presentation, by the way, that what we're looking at is a sort of a worst-case coverage scenario because you talked about the vendor guaranteeing by contract, et cetera.
Yes.
So, we're talking about better coverage than what I'm looking at here in a nutshell.
That's correct. And we can certainly provide those coverage maps to you when a packet.
I don't require it, but if anybody else wants one, that's up to you.
But yes, they are, the coverage shown on the vendor's guaranteed coverage maps exceeds the coverage that we show in here. With respect to your previous question, it's difficult to talk about someplace like Chesterfield at the same time as Amelia and Cumberland because the systems are so different. From an interoperability perspective, Chesterfield will, has now a system that's much more akin to the system that Powhatan will be putting in with this one. Goochlin has sort of an in-between system. It's an 800 megahertz, but it's not trunking for reasons of their own. Cumberland and Amelia use analog VHF and UHF systems that, as Tom said, we do have those radios, but we will have those radios capable for that. But them to provide, for them to provide coverage in here with disparate systems is probably not in the cards for any future time. Part of what we're dealing with, we've approached Chesterfield particularly. They are in the middle of their own project, and right now, they're not willing to discuss those kind of issues until they get their own system in and running. At the rate that that project is going, and it's not just Chesterfield, it's the Richmond Capital Region, so it's Chesterfield, Henrico, the City of Richmond, the County of Hanover, the City of Colonial Heights, the Airport Authority, and I'm missing someone. But all of those are in a master project with each of those entities having their own contract with the vendor. It's likely that that project could conclude later than this project. No guarantees. I mean, this project has a significant schedule with it. But at this point, because they're not finished, they're reluctant to discuss those kind of arrangements until they determine exactly what they have, how well it's working for them, and then they'll entertain, and they've told us as much. Then they'll entertain what can they do in working with neighbors and sharing resources and sharing technology.
Thank you for that answer. Appreciate that.
Other questions? Steven, does anybody have a motion?
I'd be glad to make a motion, Madam Chair.
All righty.
Make sure I'm on the right page here.
It's R-2019-11.
Page 107.
Go back.
My bad.
There you go. No, B.
So, just for clarity, just one quick follow-up. So, Tom, one of the things that was pointed out early on was that our system that we currently use is not going to be supported at some point. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And then, I think Mr. Sadler was Deputy Sadler or UnderSheriff Sadler, was nice enough to bring us a radio to one of our meetings, I think, to show us what we had. I don't know if the rest of the board members, I think it was held together by a lot of rubber bands, if I remember correctly.
Yes, sir. The battery disconnects, so the radio turns off.
Okay. So, I think we've ridden this train long enough. It's time to move on. We're bringing this project in as bonded. Unfortunately, it's several years after that. I'm sure the cost will, like Mr. Norvig would not, I'm hoping that we've got an inflation cost built in those radios because it'll be a couple of years, they sure will go up, probably won't go down. So, with all that said, I will move that we approve Resolution 2019-11, authorizing a county administrator to access a new contract with the most responsive offer to the RFP 2017-01 land mobile radio replacement upon county attorney approval.
Second.
I have just a quick discussion, Ted, for you. It does read that in 2016, 2016-25, which adopted the fiscal year 2016 Powhatan Operating Budget Capital Improvement Plan that appropriated in part 10.27 million. So, we actually did appropriate the money at the time? That's, I'm just, I'm questioning the word "appropriated" right there.
And this is, I'll ask Charlotte to chime in. My understanding, this happened under Pat Wyler's administration, and the money was appropriated as anticipated bond proceeds.
Okay. That answered that question. Thank you.
And just since I had the floor for 10 seconds, the comment about inflation, I do have a good piece of information on that, is even though we would be procuring the mobiles and handhelds in the future, we are locking the price in, in this contract at today's pricing at a very favorable rate for us.
That's right.
All righty.
Motion, second.
Yep, got it. All right.
Mr. Williams?
Hi.
Mr. Norvig?
Hi.
Mr. Cavill?
Hi.
Mr. Tucker?
Hi.
Mr. Carter?
All righty. That takes us to an update on the Founders Bridge Utility Company acquisition.
Thank you. Thank you, board members, for that, and thank you, Tom, for coming up. So, we've included in your report, a brief, in your board packet, a brief update on the Founders Bridge acquisition, showing the tasks that need to be completed, where they've been assigned and what their status is. We intend to monthly update you on this. As it stands, most of the issues are in the hands of the selling or transferring party, and we continue to, you know, reach out to them and ask for updates on that, and we'll keep you posted. But at this point, we're certainly happy to answer any questions on the various things that need to go on.
Ted, real quick, on this issue about the maintenance records that Sidner has, is there a problem with them providing that? Is that why we don't have the information?
Yes.
And do you know the nature of the problem?
I unfortunately do not know the nature. Ramona, other thoughts? They just, time to research and pull it together, is what you're hearing? We certainly understand the concern. We have, we share the concern. We do not want to acquire a system with known maintenance challenges, absent records that show what work's been done in recent years. It would be surprising to us if they did not have such records.
Agreed.
Yeah.
So, agreed.
Could I follow up, Mr. Williams, please?
Let me follow up. One other question. Where do we stand with the transfer of water to Founders Bridge from allocation Route 60 down to Founders Bridge?
And I'll need to check with Ramona on that. If you want to approach the podium, this is certainly something that we've updated the board on multiple occasions and is largely in the hands of Chesterfield County as far as timing.
Yeah, it is in the hands of Chesterfield County. They have indicated that they have, we sent them a draft water agreement, and they have done some modifications to that, and they've indicated that they have given that to their, the Public Works Department has given that to their higher-ups to review, so it's still in the review process. I don't believe it's even gone to their attorneys yet.
Anything we can do to encourage that process?
I don't know if there's anything I can do. I've done everything I can do at my level.
I understand.
I'm surely, you know, happy to reach out to Joe Casey. I touch base with him from time to time and be happy to put that on the list of things I discuss with him.
And the reason I bring it up is because the people at Founders Bridge are anxious, and they'd like to get this done.
Madam Chair, just.
Yes, sir.
So, Ramona, and I'm not putting anybody on the spot here, but in the business world, sometimes being passive is not a good thing. I think we should say to the current owners that we need data by a certain date, and if we need maintenance records, they need to work with, you know, Sidner or whoever it is.
And they have been, and we have, they're anxious to get this.
If they want us, if they're interested in us managing and taking the system over, then I think they should be expedient with what they're trying to do to get us the information that we need to make a decision. This thing, and I'm not trying to beat anybody up here, but it's kind of drug on.
We agree.
And so, just let's be forceful. Let's be vocal. Let's say we want the information. If you can't get us, we need to understand why. To Mr. Williams' point, maybe there's an opportunity for some of us to step in and help.
And we have.
And I know you, I know you've been bugging them, so to speak, and.
And Greco, Greeland Development Company, they have actually been pushing, and they've gotten us a lot of the information that we have asked for.
Okay.
It's just that one piece with Sidner, they're having problems getting that.
Thank you. And please, don't take it as I'm not saying you're not doing, just maybe we need to be a little more pushy. So, thank you.
Follow up, Mr. Williams' question. Sometimes in the future, when we've had these inter-county realizations, it's helped if a member of the Board of Supervisors went with staff. If that makes sense, not to be heavy-handed, but if it makes sense for Mr. Williams representing that district or whomever we choose to do that, to go with you and staff to visit with Mr. Casey and tell him how important this is to us and how much we want to cooperate and work with them, I'm sure this board would be amenable to that.
Thank you for the suggestion, and I'm available.
I appreciate that.
All right. So, that will take us now to D, and that is the discussion of the RC zoning. So, Andrew.
So, Ms. Cavill, I'll give a quick introduction of how we've gotten to this particular meeting on this issue. Case number 18-09-ac, which is ordinance O-2018-38, is a request by Powhatan County to eliminate the residential, commercial, or RC zoning district by repealing Sections 83-360 through Since that zoning district would be eliminated with approval of this ordinance, all the properties that are currently zoned RC will need to be reclassified to another zoning district. A public hearing was held on this request on November 26, 2018. This issue was also discussed at a workshop on December 13, 2018, and it was discussed as old business on February 25, 2019. The new zoning district for each property will generally be determined based upon the use of that property and whether it is located within a platted subdivision or not. There have been some changes to the draft ordinance since the public hearing was held in November, and those changes are outlined on pages 134 and 135 of the agenda packet. I'll go through those quickly. The first change was, since the public hearing was held, there have been some properties that have been rezoned from RC to another zoning district at the property owner's request, so those properties have been removed from the ordinance. Second, there are several split-zone parcels with two or more different zoning classifications. So, for example, there's one large parcel that's vacant, undeveloped, that's zoned RC, C, and RR5. Some clarification was made to the ordinance to specify that only the portion of the property zoned RC is changed, and the rest will remain as is. Third, language has been added stating that properties that have been zoned RC after an owner or applicant-initiated rezoning request was approved by the Board of Supervisors, and that property has not been developed for commercial or institutional purposes, is not located within a platted subdivision, and is accessed from a major thoroughfare, those properties will be rezoned to Commerce Center or CC. With that change, again, reflecting that if you rezoned your property, haven't developed it, you would go to CC. An additional 23 parcels totaling about 144 acres will be zoned CC. The preamble of the draft ordinance, or the section with all the whereas language, that reflects language recommended by Mr. Tucker. The Department of Community Development recommends approval of this request with the rationale listed in the staff report. On November 7, 2018, the Planning Commission held a public hearing to review this request. After discussion, the Planning Commission recommended approval with a vote of 3 to 1 to 1. So, that's an overview of the proposal, where we are today. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Pompey, you said that the resolution contained additions that Mr. Tucker had, or changes Mr. Tucker had requested?
Yes, sir. The whereas language at the beginning, that's some language that he recommended.
All the changes in the whereas sections.
All the changes.
And you want me to go through them?
Yeah, quickly, if you would.
On page 120, the fifth whereas down was added that starts with whereas the RCU zoning district was created by the Board of Supervisors in '84.
Right.
The next whereas was added. The next whereas was added that starts whereas no fault attaches.
Right, right.
The next whereas was added, which lists the dot points of why we're doing this. After the dot points, the next whereas was added.
Right.
At the bottom of the page, on 120, the next whereas was added, the last one.
Right.
At the top of page 121, the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors have studied, was added. The next whereas, two separate committees consisting of citizens at large, developers, property owners, et cetera, was added. The third whereas, the public was invited to weigh in, was added. I think that's all, Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker.
You're welcome.
But none of those changes addressed any particular properties? They were just.
No, I think it was an attempt on Mr. Tucker's part to explain in the resolution how we got here.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have a question of staff. So, Andrew, one of the things that is, you noted, noticed, you spoke about the changes, what about the waiving of fees? Is that new? Is that something the public has heard? Is that something they're hearing tonight, or what?
So, based on the previous discussions, some board members, and I believe the Conference of Plan and Work Group, discussed the possibility of waiving rezoning fees if this proposal went through so that those that are currently zoned RC and are changed to another zoning district could submit a rezoning application at no cost. Based on advice from the county attorney, that change, if it went through, would have to have a separate public hearing and advertising requirement. So, what's in the packet right here, I believe it's the last attachment, is a draft resolution that you all could choose to pass that initiates the process of changing rezoning fees should this ordinance be adopted. And that's on page 195. So, that's just a draft resolution you all may choose to pursue. It would have to be advertised separately at a later meeting after a public hearing is held.
Okay. Andrew, I have one other question. So, I understand if somebody has gone through a rezoning, and RC rezoning, they would then go to CC. One of the things that, as I did some research in digesting this, we also have a zoning district called C, or it used to be called GC, General Commercial, and it's C. And there are a substantial amount of properties on 60 that have been rezoned to C. Are we doing anything with those? They went through a rezoning process very similarly to what people went through with the RC. Why are we treating them any differently? They went through the same public process, the uses were very similar, and the requirements were very similar.
So, as part of this ordinance, the county, if it was, if this ordinance was approved, would only be addressing the RC zoning district? would only be addressing the RC zoning district because it'd be eliminated from the zoning ordinance, so all those properties that are currently zoned RC would have to go to some other zoning districts since RC wouldn't exist anymore?
I understand that. Go ahead.
So, if the board wanted to make some changes to the general commercial zoning district or property zone general commercial, that would have to be a separate public hearing ordinance and go through that process, beginning with the Planning Commission and coming back to you all as well.
So, those properties that went through a general commercial rezoning had a certain amount of uses to them. Same thing with the person who went through an RC rezoning had a certain amount of uses to them. A perfect example is a case that's coming for the Planning Commission next month. It's a business that is in the county, in an industrial-zoned area that has closed, and there's an applicant that would like to put a auto repair business in it. And because there's no uses left in C, General Commercial, they've got to go through a CUP process. To me, it's unfair to say to the person who rezoned an RC property that you can get CC, but yet you've got a GC, General Commercial, or C, which is very similar, and you're just going to allow them to sit there with about four or five uses that are permitted now in C. Is that basically what's taking place here with that rezoning? So, an auto repair, which there's two other auto repair businesses in that same center, but this poor guy, because we're gonna, because of the uses taken out of C, is going to have to come back and do a conditional use permit.
In August of 2018, the Board of Supervisors approved some changes to the list of permitted uses in RCC, CHSC, which is the Courthouse Square Center District, as well as O and Office. So, those uses did change at that time, so you're correct. There's a business that would like to relocate into an existing building that's zoned C. Their use requires a CUP because the list of uses has changed.
But again, I guess my point in all that is, that person that rezoned that property went through the same process that somebody went through with RC. Public hearings through both Planning Commission and Board, and we're treating them differently, I guess, and for lack of a better word, I think we're ignoring that there are 175 parcels zoned C on Route 60, and 80 of them went through a rezoning process.
May I make a suggestion, Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I agree with a lot of Mr. Melton's points, but what I don't want to do tonight is to combine these two issues. I think what we should do is have a meeting on the Commerce District separate from tonight, okay? We can do that next meeting as far as I'm concerned, because there's some good points that Bill's making. One of the reasons that we opted to take the uses out of Commerce was because these were transitional districts, and we've said, just like with RC, we wanted to move away from them. But going back to Bill's point, if you went and got your rezoning, and you put your money down, and you got your rezoning, then I think we need to look at that, because we're not taking anything away from people that achieved their rezoning under RC, for example. They're not losing anything. We're not going over there and tearing down your building, okay? We've said, if you rezoned, you're good. Now, what we will be doing is moving you to one of the current, well, one of our current zoning districts like Commerce Center, because we want to be in conformity with the comprehensive plan. So, that's my recommendation for tonight.
Another quick question, Andrew. So, when we, in GC or C, when those rezonings, there were proffers attached, full disclosure, there were proffers attached. If we downchanged them in the zoning to whether it be CC, which makes a lot of sense to Mr. Williams' point, that's a district that we seem comfortable with, would we lose those proffers?
Yes. If you rezone the property from General C with proffered conditions to Commerce Center or another zoning district, the proffers would no longer exist.
Okay, so, if we have proffers on a rezoned to RC piece, and we take it, we're going to take that to CC, are we losing the proffers there?
Yes.
And I'm not trying to muddy the waters by any means.
No, 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 all good questions. So, Andrew, if somebody has rezoned, and we know there are people that have, you've identified those parcels, and we've got the RC where it's the 500 feet by right, and then we've got where people actually rezoned to RC, correct?
Correct.
Okay. In those situations where they've rezoned, and they've rezoned with conditions, from your recollection, did they go forward with their development?
This proposal is, if you rezone to RC and you've not developed, you would go to CC.
Okay. But to Bill's point, you lose the proffered conditions. So, I got rezoned, let's say 20 years ago, to RC. I had proffered conditions. Now, what we're saying is, we're going to move you to CC, for example. And Tom is opined that proffers that are on the books, they go away.
Correct.
Okay. What's the solution, Andrew?
I guess...
It's called cannonball catching time, Andrew.
I guess one thing, we do have some statistics on the number of properties that were rezoned to RC versus the number of properties that were rezoned to RC and haven't developed. There were several zoning cases between 1984, or sorry, 1988 and 2009 that rezoned properties to RC. 93 parcels have been rezoned to RC. Of those 93 parcels, 23 have not been developed with commercial uses or as a residential subdivision. So, about a quarter have not been developed. 75% have been developed with commercial uses or as a residential subdivision. So, most, most have been developed.
But I think we need to understand, if you, if you haven't developed on those 23, although that's a small subset of the 93, shouldn't we know what proffered conditions we're potentially going to lose? And is our, some of it may not, may not be relevant at this point.
And you're right, Mr. Williams. I think that they wouldn't. I think it's important to know. And I want to thank Andrew, because I bugged the heck out of the poor guy, as a lot of us have. I'll use Walmart as a perfect example. One of the biggest rezoning challenges we had in this county and the board dealt with, and that was on the Planning Commission. They have a proffer, and they're zoned C. So, if we were to do, you know, do something, if we lost the proffers, they recently wanted to paint the building orange in certain areas. And Andrew said, "Your proffer precludes you from doing that," and he held them accountable. So, I think it's important we understand the proffers that we have, and I'm not trying to slow the process down. You know, I have a thought on all of that. You know, we need to understand that. I would prefer, David, I know you want to try to, we all want to put this to rest. We, I went back and looked, January of, December of actually 2017, the Planning Commission began the work. So, we have beat this thing and beat this thing, so it is time to move it forward. I would prefer to try to look at the C and the GC at the same time we're doing RC and speak to those citizens that are sitting out here. Another, one of those examples is the property just west of the Powhatan Vision Center, was the old Donely project. They came before the Planning Commission and Board, got rezoned five acres, and they're C. You know, is there any difference in C there than it would be if it was RC? You know?
Well, again, I'm not going to try to eat the whole elephant in one setting tonight, okay?
I understand.
You know, if we can focus on what we've been doing, and that is with the RC, I'm perfectly comfortable coming back as soon as next meeting and addressing your issues with the other zoning districts, because I think you've got valid points. But I don't think we're going to solve all of the transitional districts' issues at one setting. But we can continue to march down the road with RC. And I'm going to give this board a compliment. It's been an extended amount of time, but this hasn't been an easy journey. And previous boards have not stepped up and done what we knew was a problem. Now, tonight, we're at a point where we're in agreement. As recently as the last meeting, Mr. Tucker, you know, said, "Look, we know RC has to go." We have been able to get that far. Now, what we're trying to do tonight is to make sure we get it right, that we don't unintentionally do something that's going to harm somebody that's already had a rezoning, and they've got proffered conditions. And just as importantly, we don't want to do something that's going to harm the county. So, my recommendation for tonight is to understand the 23 parcels, the proffered conditions that are accompanying those 23 parcels when they got their RC zoning. And have the county attorney and have the director of planning, Mr. Pompey, look at those 23 parcels. So, as Billy and I have been just talking, so that we know when we make the decision what the impact is going to be, and if there are steps that we need to take to head off certain landmines, we take them. Mr. Tucker, what do you think?
Are you, are you proposing not to move forward with RC tonight?
I don't, I don't see how we can move forward when we don't know about if we lose, and Tom, weigh in here, if we lose those proffered conditions by moving people, for example, to CC. To Billy's point, it could have unintended consequences, like, for example, if we did something with Walmart in the C and allowed that proffered condition to go away because we moved them to another zoning district, then they would have the door open to paint their facility orange. Is that your point, Bill?
In GC or C, yes. And even in CC, Mr. Williams, I know you and I and Mr. Tucker worked on the Planning Commission for years, and one of the things we worked hard on was trying to get some right-of-way dedication.
Right.
For future, you know, widening of a road. If that was a proffer, and you have an RC that hasn't, you may, if somebody agreed to proffer that, then we may lose that.
So, I'm sure we can figure this out, how we can make this work. Tom and the planning director, we're this close, I think, to getting it solved. So, I don't think it's going to hurt anything to go one more meeting to get this out on the table. Tom can communicate, Mr. Pompey can communicate with us their findings, their recommendations, and if there's remedies that have to be, you know, looked at, I'm sure they're going to bring those forward as well.
So, just one, thank you, Mr. Williams. Then, we, since we wouldn't be able to vote on the reduction in fee, if we adopted this tonight, we couldn't vote on the reduction in fee till next month anyway, so we can make sure that we don't have to do a separate meeting.
We could do, we could have that there, and please know it has my support. You know, Billy, if you remember when Ms. Carmack and you and I spent a couple of months with Andrew in the county conference room going through this, you know, as a subcommittee, we talked about this. And I think there was unanimity that that was something that we could do and wanted to do. So, I'm all in with the resolution.
Let's let Tom weigh in.
Yeah, just so I understand, all we could come back, all Andrew could come back, I mean, I don't know that I can add anything. All Andrew can come back and say is, "This parcel had these six proffers. This parcel had these three proffers." There's no way to salvage those proffers. There's nothing we can do. All we can, we can give you information, but that'll be all you'll get is information. There's no way to rescue the proffer if we rezoned, so to speak. So, if we rezoned that RC to CC, there's no tool we have to bring those proffers.
Well, some of the proffers might be innocuous in terms of, it might not be a dedication. And if it is a dedication, we've learned, like, for example, on Route 60, VDOT's already got enough right-of-way. So, in such a way, that's what I'm looking for, Tom.
Well, and that, I mean, Andrew will have to put, it'll just be a list of, here's the proffers for these parcels. That's what you'll get. That's...
And Andrew, what you can do is, you can say, "Okay, based on what it was that they were proposing to do at that time, and now, this is what the property looks like today. This is what is surrounded. How big of a problem do you think it would be if those proffers went away?" That's all I'm looking for.
And one thing I'd like to add to that.
Please.
Again, most of these properties that were rezoned to RC at the request of the owner were rezoned between 1988 and 2009. I would venture to say, and some of you all may know better than I, we have more stringent development standards now than we did during that time period, and those development standards address many of the issues that we are concerned about, such as architecture, access, and that kind of thing as well.
They're all consistent across all districts. The architecture's the same in all districts today. We just approved, you have a review process, you have a Planning Commission review process for the architectural standards, you have an architectural design book, you have a waiver that can only be given for access management by the Board of Supervisor. So, a lot of the things that maybe we're trying to get to, we already have in place. But anyway, that's a whole separate subject.
So, from what I understand, you all would like me to compile all the proffered conditions, review all the proffered conditions from previously approved RC zoning cases, and give you an indication as to whether those are substantial proffers or not.
Time bombs are, you know, any bombs are going to go off. Some, like I say, it's not going, it's not going to be an issue, I don't believe. But again, I can make a good decision with good information. I don't want to make a decision in the dark tonight and find out that we've really stepped in it.
Yep. Go ahead.
Do we want to, so David, you're comfortable deferring for 30 days. The staff, you okay with 30 days? I know we originally said to the public, we could defer this thing up to 90 days.
We've only been 30.
And we, and we brought it back trying to put this thing to rest, as we beat it up enough. Are you okay with a 30-day? Did people pull that kind of data together together?
Well, the April, the April regular meeting, not a workshop, the regular April meeting.
I'm fine with you, Bill.
Let's get the date of that on the record. How about that?
Make sure, Andrew.
So, the only, I'm not going to change a single thing in the staff report, the ordinance or anything. I'm just going to have a list of proffered conditions for RC zoning. Is that correct?
A list with your comments opining whether or not you think this is something really significant. If it's something out there that's really a game changer, I want you to asterisk it, bring it to, show, bring it to our attention, explain why you think it's really significant, and then if there's anything that you can think of that, you know, we can consider, give us your recommendations.
And are we also going to include the waiver of the fees in the advertisement?
Yes, ma'am.
So, be sure that's included as well.
Yes, ma'am. That would be in the resolution, I believe.
Uh-huh.
If I may ask one quick question?
They have a second resolution.
One quick question on that. The draft resolution in this month's packet, has all rezoning fees waived if an application is submitted prior to January 1, 2025? Do you all want to keep the complete waiver of rezoning fees, and are you comfortable with that date?
We had one individual who asked for 10 years.
I'm not sure I bought into or agree with the reasoning about directions and things like that. I'm comfortable with what we say, five years.
Yes, sir. Mr. Tucker.
David, I understand your desire to go into decision-making with your eyes wide open. I really do. You're famous for that. That's one of your strong points. I appreciate it. What I'm concerned about is that the next meeting, we're going to have the same discussion over another issue that somebody comes up with to say, "Whoa, stop. We got to study it again, another 30 days, et cetera." And the last thing I'll say is, whatever we learn from Mr. Pompey's research, do you really think it's going to change our intent to eliminate RC? It's a rhetorical question. You don't need to answer it. I'm fine. Thank you.
Let me, let me respond, Mr. Tucker.
It's a rhetorical, you don't need to respond.
No, no, no. I'm fine with answering rhetorical questions.
Well, it's 10 minutes after eight.
No. The reason I want to answer it is because I agree with you. It, I know, I know how it works. You know, we've been around long enough to know how this can get extended. You have my commitment, folks. We're going to do this, okay? We're going to do this next month. And we're going to go into that meeting with the information already been provided to us, not Wednesday in the packet, you know, before the meeting on Monday, but we're going to be working closely with Tom and staff, Andrew, such that we're going to have the information. We will, by the time we get ready to send the packet, say, we'll have already decided what we're going to do. So, that's the reason I wanted to respond. I know, I know you're concerned, and you have my commitment as one board member, that it's going to happen next meeting. Thank you.
All right. Let's, let's get a motion on the table. This is not a tough one. Mr. Tucker, would you like to make it?
I'm not making this motion. I'm going to vote against the motion.
Okay.
I'll be glad to make the motion. It would be to defer for 30 days till our April...
22nd.
22nd.
22nd Board of Supervisor meeting, ordinance 2018-38. Is that correct?
Yes.
And to also advertise the amendment. And to also advertise the amendment, the resolution for advertising that we will be granting waivers to the rezoning fees for the dates given. Is that correct, Andrew?
Correct.
Okay. That would be the motion, and I'll second your motion, Mr. Milton.
Thank you.
Bonnie?
Aye.
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 All righty. That brings us to new business, 13A, resolution fixing the calendar year 2019 personal property tax rates.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is our annual fixing of our calendar year personal property tax rates. This will impact our first half of 2019 that will be billed in June, and the second half which will be billed in November of 2019 for fiscal year 2020. A notice of public hearing is only required if we're going to increase the taxes, and this resolution keeps all personal property taxes at the same level it was for calendar year 2018.
Okay. Any comments, gentlemen? So, we need a motion? Is that right?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution 2019-12 fixing the calendar year FY 2019 personal property tax rates as advertised.
Second.
Okay, great.
Aye.
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 Okay. 13B, a discussion of the authorization to advertise the publication of the budget, related tax rates, and the proposed CIP program. So, this is just Mr. Norvind. Let's pick up where we left off at the beginning of the meeting. I'll just update everybody. This calendar was passed out. This was updated on March the 14th. This reflects what you suggested at the last meeting.
Right.
But that was not discussed by the board. This is the original calendar that was handed out at the beginning of this process. Here are copies of the original one if anybody wants it. And that's where we go from here.
So, Madam Chair, basically what the new calendar does is it doesn't force us to make the decision along with the school board portion in May. Pretty much what it does is it gives us some breathing room. We have all the way till June 30th, and this just sort of strings it out a bit on the schedule. And that's what I was trying to get at before, is that since we have the new wrinkle of the fire and rescue three-and-a-half cent possible tax proposal, and then now we have some options to look at phasing it over three different periods, and maybe some wiggle room. I know Mr. Tucker's come up with some suggestions that I just saw before this meeting for maybe how to decide what is vital and what may be less so. But fire and rescue, public health and safety, as we all know, is our number-one charge from the Commonwealth, and it's a serious matter. So, we need to do this one in particular very carefully. So, because we have all this change in the midst of the budget season, and it will impact this budget, I think it's a great idea to move forward with the school portion if we're of one mind that we're not going to be altering that. And then just drop back a little bit and discuss the options for a more holistic approach to the operating side of our budget. Thanks.
Is there a motion?
I have no idea.
No, I don't think so.
No discussion.
Just discussion. I have some concerns about waiting until June the 24th to adopt the county budget. I know that a lot of people will be on vacation. I just worry a little bit about that, limiting some citizen input. And we were presented with the school board budget last week. I think that there's some room in this calendar from tonight, March the 25th, all the way to June the 24th. You know, we can move some things up.
So, Madam Chair, I do kind of agree that, and for the record, I will be on vacation on June 24th with my grandchildren and my sons and daughters. So, if we have a meeting, then I'll be joining remotely. I will assure you of that. It is the week, first full week after school gets out. Well, I guess the week before that, they get out that Friday. People do take their vacations. If it's a way to move it forward and meet the obligations for advertising, is that a possibility?
To maybe even the...
Well, let me make a suggestion. We have a budget meeting Monday night, correct? Now...
No.
No, you don't.
The 11th is our next.
11th is the scheduled meeting.
David, you get a night off.
Y'all got me programmed. You know, my Mondays are just automatically, you know, hardcoded into the calendar. So, now you don't.
Well, you can show up here. You'll win every vote. It just won't be seconded.
Monday night.
Okay, so it's going to be Wednesday, the what?
Thursday, the 11th.
Thursday, April 11th, okay.
And that's...
Here's where I'm going, you know. I'm going through the calendar wrong, but here's where I'm going. If we can have that meeting on Thursday, 11th, and I've had a sidebar with Mr. Tucker this evening, I've had a sidebar with the county administrator, my two issues was, one, fund public safety. We found out about a need at the end of our budget formation just recently. We need to close the loop on, we said as a board, no tax increase. That was the guidance to the county administrator. So, if we can come to a way where we can meet our public safety obligations, phasing in what we need to do this year, and at the same time, close the loop on any one cent or whatever tax increase, find the money in the budget. Far as I'm concerned, we're good to go. You can advertise, you know, close the schedule, you know, down from what it is. So, if we can do that Monday night, I'm good to go.
Madam Chair.
Wait, Ms. Schubert probably has some very important...
Well, I think she does have advertising requirements.
That's on that about advertising.
Yes. In order for the school board budget to be adopted by the May 15th, however we go with this, I have to have the advertisement in the paper seven days prior to the public hearing date, and then we can't adopt until seven days after you have a public hearing. So, that's why I picked the dates that I did for whether it's the whole budget or the school budget. If you choose to split and do school budget only, we still have to have a public hearing, and we still have to advertise and adopt. And so, we'll be having two public hearings, well, if we go that option. But if you choose on April 11th to decide what you need to advertise, we can't have the public hearing on April 18th for the whole budget.
Okay.
Because I don't have seven days to give it into Palatine today.
I understand. So, it sounds like what you're telling us is that we need to go ahead and advertise the school board budget separately.
Well, and back to the original budget schedule, it works to, we would have to decide tonight which budget to advertise. That's the rub.
Right.
So, what if we did that at the April 11th meeting like Mr. Williams suggested?
Then I would not have enough time to...
That would be the whole shoot and match.
The whole, I wouldn't have enough time. I'd have to look at the, well, if we wanted to have to advertise, I was trying not to have too many extra dates. Oh, the 22nd was the actual Monday. We were going to have the public hearing.
So, that's 11 days.
From the 11th. If you decided on the 11th, I can't, the earliest I can get it in the paper, I might be able to get it to them on that Friday to advertise on the 17th, but that's not seven full days before your public hearing. I have to have seven days.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Am I counting that right? Okay.
No, you were counting it right.
You have to have seven full days prior to the public hearing. That's a code, state Virginia code requirement.
And we have to, by state code, adopt the county school budget by May 9?
By May 15th.
Well, could we roll back and perhaps wrap it up, a little bit of a meeting in the middle, wrap it up by our May 20th regular board of supervisor meeting?
Yeah.
I think that's about all we have. April 11th, then we have the regular April 22nd.
Then we have, go ahead and advertise after April 11th, and then have the public hearing on the, what, 20th?
Well, the 22nd.
22nd of May.
But we couldn't...
I can't.
Yeah, we can't do that.
Yeah, because we're right.
Yeah. So, we would have to add one more line in here. We would just bump everything down one meeting, and we would vote on the May 25th, 22nd meeting? What's the May meeting?
I think their cutoff is first of May, isn't it, for the school?
15th now. They actually gave us...
15th, only contracts?
Two more weeks in the last couple of years, yes. Well, that's just the code section that says that the school board budget is to be appropriate, to be adopted by May 15.
Okay.
Which is hard for counties, because most counties, their school budget's in their county budget, but the county budget, so it's just easier to do it all by May 15. If possible, obviously you can split it.
Well...
Well, if we can get everything done at the April 11th workshop, Charlotte.
Yes, sir.
You advertise, then when is the soonest we could have a meeting after the April 11th agreement on the budget? When is the soonest advertising we could have a meeting?
Because it won't come in the paper until...
The soonest advertisement, if I could get it in the paper on that Friday, which I can let the paper know that it's coming, usually she'll hold a spot for me. It would go in on April 17th, so the earliest is April 24th that you can have the public hearing.
Okay, so why don't we change the April 22nd to April 24th?
That's radical.
I mean, that's a regular board of supervisors' scheduled meeting. That's not a workshop day. So, that was, I was trying to fit it into your regular schedule, unless you want to move your regular board of supervisors' meeting to...
Well, we've had, we can do it either way. I don't know what the agenda looks like. I haven't talked to the chairman about her agenda for that meeting. Would it be a burden to have the public hearing of the budget on the, as part of the regular meeting?
I don't know. Would it be a worry about moving a meeting?
Okay.
We'll just meet again on the 24th. We've done it in years past, David. We had a budget meeting and voted and moved on and left, went home.
We can do that.
Out of 30 minutes.
I'm fine with that.
And of course, we may have more people come speak this time. I hope we do.
We can do that. We can have it on a separate night, you know, come in, do our work, and have the public hearing.
As long as it's, you know, the thing you've got on your agenda and not burden it down by a bunch of others.
Well, but on the original schedule, it is a public hearing, budget, and CIP for the April 22nd meeting. So, you know, if we plan that way, I think that should be all right.
But she said the soonest would be April 24th.
I can't actually get the budget into the paper till the 7th.
Can we advertise in the Richmond Times-Dispatch? Would that kind of frustrate the public that they're not getting it from their hometown paper? That's the problem, is the daily versus a weekly.
We get a bit of not communicated now.
Yeah, I'm just throwing it out there as a, it's not like we'd be...
What are your thoughts about moving a regular Monday meeting to a Wednesday? Is that okay with, is that palatable?
Or moving from the 22nd to the 29th?
Yeah, I was going to say, the other option is to move, well, the other option would be to move your regular meeting to the 29th.
Let's see where Mr. Milton can be here.
Well, I'll join remotely if I have to. But what's wrong with moving the meeting from Monday night to Wednesday night?
We've done it before.
We've done it before when...
The whole meeting?
The whole meeting, move it, and put the budget and CIP on that meeting.
Communicate it to the public. Let them know. Can move it for hurricanes before.
Are you okay with that?
I'm okay with that.
Everybody fine with that?
I think we might have found consensus.
So, then would you then be able to meet the May 9th deadline, or would you have to move that back?
No, May 9th would be fine, because that's more than seven days from that Wednesday to adoption.
Right.
So, I have to have seven days before, seven days after before you can adopt.
All right, so we're set.
Okay.
Great.
All right. Thank you.
So, we all clear?
So, what we've done is we're going to be prepared on the 11th, really roller sleeves up and work on the fire, rescue, et cetera. And then we've got CIP that night also. And then we will move the meeting on the 24th.
The 22nd to the 24th.
22nd to the 24th, okay.
And we're still on May 9th?
Okay.
Okay.
Next.
All righty. Thank you. Darrell L. Tomes. Mr. Latchney, Mr. Williams?
Well...
It was a discussion, so we don't need a vote or anything, correct?
Correct.
Yeah?
I would recommend a vote to move the meeting, since we're actually officially moving a regular meeting. I would recommend...
I'll make a motion we move our April 22nd, 2019 meeting to Wednesday, April 24th, 2019.
Second.
Is this an all in favor or a poll?
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Darrell L. Tomes. Yeah?
You lost me.
Mr. Williams, you asked to amend the agenda and add 13C.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. All righty. I thought we had solved the issue about derelict buildings with previous things that we had done as a board. I found out last week in talking to Mr. Pompey when I discovered an issue in my district with an abandoned house. The house has been abandoned for some time, years. And the neighbors have made complaints to the county about the abandoned house and the vehicles. They took me over there this past, it was either Saturday or Sunday, or, excuse me, the previous week. And when I saw the condition of the house with trees actually growing up through the back deck, which had collapsed, the porch you wouldn't have walked up on, garage is the same condition, abandoned boat, abandoned vehicles. Again, I called my planning director. He contacted the folks who are no longer living in Palatine County. And the communication that came back, well, he said he'd get the vehicles, but other than that, it's not much we can do. And I told Andrew, I said, I cannot believe that. It's got to be something else we can do. I asked Andrew to get in touch with the county attorney, talk to the building department, which he did. I talked to Tom today, and I asked Tom to send you pictures, which he did, of the building. I also talked to the chair. She has similar situation she shared with me in her district. I think all of us do. But you saw from those pictures, nobody would want to live next door to that house. Now, they have rats, debris, and then you'll see in the house in the rear of that home that's abandoned, kids' swing set on the next lot. Now, none of us would want that for our family, for our community, for our kids. And he also looked at the homes around that abandoned home. It looked like Hensel and Gretel lived in those homes. They were that well-kept, that nice. So, I asked Tom if he would come forward with some suggestions tonight on what we could do to remedy this, because I would like to see us to move ASAP. Tom?
Mr. Chairman, Madam Chair, for one quick second. David, I'm kind of like you. I was, when I saw the pictures today, thank you, Tom, for sending them, David. I thought we addressed this a while ago when we had a situation, if I remember it correctly, it might have been District 2 that talked about public safety, et cetera, et cetera. So, to find that we're not, we don't have the ability to do that, is pretty alarming to me. So, I'm going to shut up and listen to you, but I thought we addressed it.
Mr. Milton, I can chime in on that. It was District 2. It was a particular neighborhood. And what the discussion ended up being was, it included, how tall should we let the grass grow? And we decided to let it, you know, that part, we're going to let it go. The issue came down to the particular house that I brought up. Ugly as could be, completely abandoned, you know, shutter tilted here, the gutters were kind of swayed, a couple shingles missing here and there. But it was not to the point where it was a public safety and health hazard. And so, there was nothing we could do. That's where that conversation led, and that's how we ended up, which sounds much different than rats.
Ready?
Yes, sir.
All right. I don't know how much information you want. If I give you too much, I apologize. There's, as you know, we're Dillon's rule state, so we can only do what the General Assembly tells us we can do. So, we have to use this toolbox full of different tools. To Mr. Milton's issue, we did adopt a trash and debris ordinance. So, if somebody's got a bunch of trash in their yard, and it is a public safety or health risk, we can, and we have gone to court on a couple of those and successfully, but they were in residential neighborhoods. It's a little more difficult in a large rural parcel, a large acreage parcel, to succeed on a trash and debris. This is a derelict building, a derelict structure. You have a couple of tools under the state. One of them is if you adopt the Uniform Statewide Building Code Maintenance Code, then we could address this under the maintenance code. But we have not adopted that. I'm not recommending we do. I mean, it has a whole different staffing issues come up when you adopt a maintenance code. So, we've not adopted the maintenance code of the building code. So, the state, however, gives us a couple of other tools that we can use. There is a state nuisance law that we can proceed under. And basically, what the state nuisance law says is that if the, that we can compel a responsible party to abate, raise, or remove a public nuisance, if it's an imminent or immediate threat to life or property... property, and unsafe, unsanitary buildings are included in the definition of that. I would classify this as an unsafe, unsanitary building. So under nuisance law, we have two options. Option one is we can go to court and try and compel the owner of the property to do something about it, or we can do it ourselves and simply sue the owner for the cost of us doing it, which includes tearing it down, which for this structure, it looks like that's probably the best remedy. So one option is to go under nuisance law. The other option, Virginia has, has a couple of blight ordinances. We could declare this property blighted, and if we declare it blighted, we have multiple options. We could actually condemn it and then sell it and use the sales money to pay for the cost of raising it and clearing it. We could use the blight ordinance to compel the property owner to clean it up himself, or we could use the blight ordinance to clean it up, and then we put a lien on it, just like real estate, uh, real estate tax liens. So those are tools that we have in the state law arsenal. All I, if the board wants to proceed on this house, really, all I need to know is, do you want us to do it, we pay for it and then recoup our money? Do you want us to go to court and first and try and force the property owner to do it, which is gonna be a slower process? We can do it either way, if, if it is the pleasure of this board to do something about it. We can either, we initiate the tearing down of the structure, go after the property owner, or we can go after the property owner and ask the court to compel him. One is fairly immediate, the other, longer term.
Immediate. So, so just Madam Chair, um, we have a, an ordinance tonight before us that the Planning Commission passed, zero nineteen fifteen. It gives the county Palatane, request the amendment and reenactment of the following sections of zoning ordinance, and the county of Palatane, Chapter eighty-three, to create and define. It says to create and define a new use called dump heap, and to prohibit that use in all zoning districts. Now, Mr. Norvig was very eloquent to let us know the challenge was the height of grass, and do you put trash in the back of your pickup truck, et cetera, et cetera. Those are things that I've always kinda felt like may go a little far, but I, I really wanna understand, if this ordinance that's coming before us tonight, is that gonna help? So.
Not this situation.
Not in this situation.
No, the dump heap ordinance is designed to solve another problem. The dump heap ordinance is designed, we used to, we used to, in our zoning ordinance, have a, two hundred square feet of junk was an illegal junkyard. When we redid the zoning ordinance a few years ago, we eliminated that. This dump heap ordinance is designed to put that back. So when somebody's got hundreds of square feet of scrap metal and pallets, and that, if the board adopts this ordinance tonight, that will then become an illegal junkyard through zoning law. That doesn't address a derelict building, though, because the building is permitted by right by zoning law.
Thank you. I just wanted to know, we're, we're working on this ordinance tonight, if there was some enhancements could be done to that to address, help address the situation.
The problem is the General Assembly doesn't give us just blanket authority, they, we gotta piece these things together, and that's the order.
Yeah, I understand, I understand private property rights are pretty, and I've always been a supporter of that, but in looking at the pictures today, this is not a big private property.
So Tom, tell us what you need us to tell you.
Immediate.
What, what I just need, if, I need you to tell me, A, went the county attorney's office to proceed against this property, and B, do you want me to proceed against it by we just raise it and charge him? Or do you want us to first give the property owner thirty days to fix it himself, and if he doesn't, then we proceed against him and raise it? Or do you want me to just go to court? So really, one of those three choices.
So the first question is yes.
Yes, on doing something.
Right.
So.
Second question is B.
What is, which one's B? Give him thirty days, and if he doesn't, we do it.
Yeah.
Is that your motion?
Yeah.
There's no fixing up this home. It's either you raise it or you don't. There's no fixing up.
Well, you either give him the opportunity to do it.
I know, I know. Per what you said was he's agreed to pull the vehicles out.
There's a motion on the floor, Madam Chairman.
So, okay.
Second that?
Second.
All right, so all in, Bonnie? Do we need to?
Don't, I just need a head nod, I just need.
Just to make sure, we give him thirty days, correct, Mr. Tucker? And after thirty days, you have your margin orders that we're moving, right?
And now, understand, we'll have to spend money, so that, I'm sure we can pull a temporary lot of contingents. I mean, I'll defer to the county administrator on that. If we go raid, take it down, we'll have to spend some money to take it down, and then we'll recoup that down.
Won't take much.
It won't. But you can write it such that we can recover, right?
Right, we will recoup that as either a lien on the property or, or a direct lawsuit for the damages. I'm, I'm probably, since you're doing the thirty days, probably gonna do the blight ordinance, 'cause that has a thirty-day notice requirement, and then we'll go through blight, which if we take it through blight, then we can actually lien it like a real estate tax lien.
Okay, we have a motion in a second.
Yep, so it's just an all in favor.
Aye. And Tom, board members, thank you. And you, you've made a lot of people happy tonight.
All right, let's get to the public hearing.
All righty, public hearings, so, um, great.
Okay, the next pub, or the first public hearing. It's ordinance Z, or O dash twenty nineteen dash thirteen, which is also case number nineteen dash O two dash CUP. It's a request by Nathan Mead for a conditional use permit to allow a detached accessory dwelling unit within the single-family residential two zoning district. The use is proposed to be located on tax map thirty D dash two dash sixteen, which is a seven point four acre parcel situated at the end of a cul-de-sac on State Route twelve ninety-three, which is also known as Norwood Creek Drive. The applicant plans to construct an accessory dwelling unit to the rear of the existing single-family dwelling. The proposed unit will be subject to the applicable accessory dwelling unit standards in the zoning ordinance and is proposed to be used as a living quarters for relatives. At their meeting on March fifth, twenty nineteen, the Planning Commission recommended approval of this request with a five oh vote, subject to the conditions listed in the staff report on page two hundred and seven of your packet. The conditions increase the required side yards, establish general architectural design standards, and clarify the maximum floor area of an accessory dwell, of the accessory dwelling unit. With these proposed conditions, the use is generally compatible with the surrounding properties. And the applicant is here tonight. He does not have a formal presentation, but is available if you have any questions.
Okay.
No questions this time.
All right, um, so we need to open the public hearing on this, and, um, if anybody would like to come and speak on this, please come down to the podium. Once, twice. No public comments. So we will now close the public hearing. So do we have a motion?
Can I, can I ask, can I have one question?
Yeah.
No, Andrew, she's, she's doing a great job, leave her alone. So just, just for clarity, um, while the Planning Commission, and if the board approves this, um, it does not preclude any covenants. If the covenants of the neighborhood preclude, that's a separate issue in itself, correct?
That's my understanding.
So, so if they choose to pursue, county can approve it, and Planning Commission can approve it, but if the covenants of a neighborhood would preclude this, then it was up to the neighborhood, you know, to, to do that. And I'm all, all in support for this, because I think it's a wonderful, wonderful way to create some affordable housing, and as Norvig has talked about before, uh, and stuff. So just, just wanted that on the record.
As long as Tom doesn't have any.
Okay. Now, covenant, local, local homeowner association covenants, restrictive covenants can always be stricter than our rules. They can never be, make it looser than our rules, but they can always have stricter than our rules.
Right, and it's their choice to enforce it. Just wanted on the record, thank you.
Madam Chair, I'll make the motion.
Okay.
To approve an ordinance. O dash twenty nineteen dash thirteen.
Second.
All righty.
Second that. Aye.
We got one.
Aye.
Sorry, Bonnie.
Is this Kevin?
Aye.
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 Okay. Thank you very much. Now we're moving into, um, twenty nineteen dash fourteen.
So case number nineteen dash O one dash R E Z C, which is ordinance number O dash twenty nineteen dash fourteen, is a request by David Corey Hitt to rezone approximately four point three five acres from general commercial C to Commerce Center CC with proffered conditions. The subject properties, tax map twenty-six B one dash one dash one and twenty-six B one dash one dash two are located near the Courthouse Village southeast of the intersection of US Route sixty, Anderson Highway, and US Route five twenty-two, Maiden's Road. The applicant plans to construct a mixed-use development, which would include offices, retail space, a specialty eating slash drinking establishment, and a live-work dwelling. The applicant has voluntarily proffered three conditions, which relate to conformance with a conceptual plan, the design of freestanding signage, and timing of a, of construction of a left turn lane into the development from State Route thirteen. In conjunction with this rezoning request, the applicant has requested that the Board of Supervisors approve a wa, a waiver or modification to local intersection spacing requirements set forth in table sixty-eight dash one seventy-five E five D of the subdivision ordinance. The development plans to share an existing entrance with the adjacent car wash on site or on an adjacent site from State Route thirteen, Old Buckingham Road. The existing entrance, which is located within the shared access easement that currently exists, does not meet current intersection spacing requirements, so that's why that waiver is being requested. The Department of Community Development recommends approval of this request with the rationale and the reasoning described in the staff report. On March fifth, twenty nineteen, the Planning Commission held a public hearing on this issue, and after discussion, recommended approval of the rezoning request and the waiver request with a vote of five to zero. I believe the applicant has a short presentation and slideshow that he would like to give to you all.
Okay.
Good evening, and, uh, thank you for this opportunity. My wife regrettably could not be here this evening, uh, so she wanted me to share with you some information about the first phase of our development. Ideally, what you'll see on that conceptual plan is, um, the end goal of what we would like to achieve with this property, which includes, um, a free regional dental clinic for children, which will be our phase one, uh, that I'd like to talk about now. Um, in the future phase, there'll be some, um, some business square footage for office space, and also a, um, possible family, uh, cafe, coffee house, restaurant-style place that we'd like to build as well. The phase one is what we're gonna start with. Everything else is kind of what we're looking at just personally, financing three to five years down the road or further as we can. With the phase one, the dental clinic, and why we feel that's important, um, is, you know, my wife started, uh, doing dental work about twenty years ago, um, and she actually has been teaching now, dental assisting, for about sixteen years. For fifteen of those years, she's been going out to communities where, you know, kids are on well water, uh, she's been going to Mission of Mercy, Lunenburg, different places, and helping out at those elementary schools with, uh, kind of a mobile dental operation. And if you'll just kinda, um, you'll see the mobile dental operations that she sets up, um, that, uh, she uses the school gymnasiums, uh, keep going, um, Give Kids a Smile, uh, that's another opportunity where they set up in, uh, the city of Richmond, um, and keep going. Uh, Mission of Mercy is a, um, it's a triage and restorative, uh, one of them that they do is in Wise County, uh, and we go there every year, uh, to participate in that. Honduras, we've set up a, uh, regional clinic in the city of Tagusagapa in Honduras that also supports the kids there, uh, where they can come. It's a base of operations where we also take trucks and go out into the community and set up these mobile operations at their schools and do the same thing. Um, every six months, we go back and we see about twenty-four hundred to twenty-five hundred kids that we treat with fluoride treatments and cleanings, uh, and then we have dentists there. Of course, they work there on a lot less than they work here in the United States, so it's, it's very easy for us to be able to pay a dentist there to, to do some of that restorative work or oral surgery, things like that. Should go to the next one. Um, and that's a picture of the dental clinic we started there. You go to the next one, and the next one, and the next one. Um, go ahead to the next one, 'cause that's not a flattering picture, but, um, we also have, uh, supported a dental clinic in Romania that, uh, reaches out to Greece and Hungary and does the exact same thing with treating children. And if you'll go to the next one. So this is a dental assisting school that my wife started. Not advertising that piece of it, it's just it ties into it because the dental assisting school that she does here in Palatane, as well as her, um, day job teaching dental assisting students at, uh, uh, another county, uh, school division, she ties in the volunteer opportunities of getting those kids involved in, uh, these, you know, these mission trips and, uh, going to Honduras or going to Wise County, uh, to treat children. And, and so that gives you kind of a timeline of how everything, uh, transpired. Last year, we started a foundation here in Palatane, it's a five oh one C three, that will be operating the, the clinic at this site. Um, so we hope to make that a regional, uh, treatment facility for children to be able to come. The closest one that we have now is VCU, where families have to travel an hour, two hours to be able to get the kids downtown, uh, or they have to wait that once a year for Mission of Mercy to come through, where VCU kinda picks up and goes out into the field. This clinic will give us the opportunity to treat kids on a, uh, you know, where we'll have the facility open on Saturdays, where we may do once a month, once a quarter, but it will be a better opportunity to bring kids in from Palatane that are from, um, you know, kind of struggling situations where maybe the families can't afford dental care, but also from Amelia, Cumberland, Goochlin, and beyond. And again, that's phase one. Our dwelling would be above that facility in the second floor, uh, as we can afford to, again, and, uh, we'd like to move our dwelling to one of the other buildings, once we get that built, and the space above the dental clinic would become a, um, apartments is a loaded word, I understand that. It's not gonna be apartments, per se, it will be temporary living facilities for some of our dentists and hygienists that travel in. We have people that travel from as far away as New York or Florida that come in, uh, to help out, and so those people would be able to travel in, and they would have a place to stay while they're helping us in the local community with doing these operations, and then they would travel back home. Um, we'd also use it as a patient recovery, um, where if we triage and we get a child that has a more severe condition with some kind of oral surgery or they need to have done, then they would be able to be moved to that area where they could be observed for twenty-four hours, forty-eight hours, whatever's required, before they travel back home. So, um, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Any questions? Yes.
We're impressed, thank you. Thank you for the family's doing.
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, so we'll open the public, uh, hearing on this. If anybody would like to come and speak on this case, please come down. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing on this.
This is my district, Madam Chair. Uh, I do have a question for Andrew. Just wanna talk a little bit about the traffic impact analysis. So in phase one, basically, we're talking about fifty-one daily trips, is that correct? It's on page two forty-six.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then if he does phase two, which could be years down the road, talking about ninety-four in a small office building?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then if you did residence, it, you know, it's nine or whatever. So the total of all, in a small office building, total of all, that's like one forty-five, about two hundred, let's just, for easy math, one ninety. And, and, and that's what triggered the left turn lane to be built in later years?
Correct. Once all four phases are constructed, the peak hour turns trigger the need, just barely, uh, for a left turn into the site from State Route thirteen.
And the entrance that's currently there that he's gonna share with a car wash, is that gonna be improved, widened, or is it just gonna be as it is? Maybe that's a, a question of.
Through the site plan process, VDOT would have input on whether that needs to be improved
or, or that kinda thing. It appears to meet commercial entrance requirements.
Was a must dialogue at the Planning Commission meeting on, at seven fifteen to seven forty-five, the traffic backs up from the middle school all the way to the park entrance, and backs up from the middle school to the thousand and two, from seven fifteen from the middle school to the 1002, from 7:15 to 7:45 every morning. I know in here it talks about the cut-through at Red Barn, which has always gone on for, since I've been in the county 26 years, but I guess, hopefully, the business is not going to open at 7:15 in the morning because you can't put any more traffic on that road until the deputy lets the buses start turning in, everybody's at a standstill. And then it happens again in a lesser degree with the elementary school, and, you know, I guess, I'm okay with the traffic, you know, the traffic impact analysis, but I'm just concerned, Corey, I guess, opening hours, I mean, do you have a feel for what you might have?
Yes, and that, that was also why, ideally, Phase One was starting with the dental clinic and the school area and everything, is that my wife operates the school on weeknights, and so that would not interfere with the, the bus situations at all. The dental clinic by the foundation would be run on Saturdays, possibly Friday nights, but mainly Saturdays. And so, other than that, it would just be our residential traffic coming and going out of the property.
Okay. That brings me a little more level of comfort.
Well, and, and our hope was that with the future development being three to five years down the road, that, you know, hopefully, you know, some sort of solution could come up with, for that traffic in that area within that amount of time. Otherwise, you know, I know we've had the discussion, and I also had the discussion with county staff about, you know, my wife and I, we, you know, we were volunteering to have a, an easement, give the county an easement or a cut-through to alleviate that traffic from the middle school, and we, you know, we're always willing to come to the table and discuss that, to, to give that to the county, to help with that. And if you'll look at the conceptual plan, you'll even notice that we, we kept the ability to continue that cut-through road to the U-turn on Route 60. So if that's ever something that the county wants to pursue, you know, we're willing to give the county that right way to do that.
You're talking about the crossover right there at the Adams, Adams Oil?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. That, that may be something that wants to happen one day. Hopefully, the schools will help figure out a better plan to bring traffic off the road from 7:15 to 7:45. Okay, only question, thank you, Andrew. I'm going to make a motion.
Well, I've got a question.
Go ahead.
Do we need a dedication for Route 60 for the future expansion?
No, we asked VDOT about that question, and you can kind, you can see on the conceptual plan on page 244.
I'm fine, I'm fine. I'm fine, I think, I think you've.
It's enough there, David.
Y'all addressed that. When you say generally acceptable, what do you mean by generally acceptable in these proppers?
They align with or exceed recommendations in the zoning ordinance, the wording is okay, there's no major, you know, red flags with the proper.
So when you say generally acceptable, you're saying they're okay, they meets our, meets our standards?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. I'll make a motion, we approve 2000, 0201914 REZ case.
I'll second that.
Aye.
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 Thank you, Mr. White.
All right, that takes us to 2019-15. This is our dump heap ordinance.
Case number 19-05-AZ, or ordinance O-2019-15, is a proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance that would establish a definition for dump heap and prohibit dump heaps in all zoning districts except on properties being used for agricultural purposes. The Department of Community Development receives complaints from members of the public regarding the condition of unkempt properties in Powhatan County. Code enforcement issues are investigated and pursued on a complaint-based, or a complaint basis. Sometimes these properties have unsightly piles of trash and other debris. To provide Powhatan County with additional tools to require property owners to remove unsightly trash and debris piles, the county attorney's office and the Department of Community Development have drafted an ordinance amendment that would identify a new use called dump heap. Maintaining a dump heap will be prohibited within all zoning districts with the exception of all properties used for agricultural purposes. Just as an aside, our first zoning ordinance from 1965 had dump heap as a use and a definition, so we're going for full circle, I guess. The Department of Community Development recommends approval of the proposed amendment with the rationale listed in the staff report. The planning commission held a public hearing on this request on March 5th, 2019. After discussion and recommendations regarding language exempting agricultural properties, the planning commission recommended approval of this request with a vote of five to zero. I'd be happy to answer any questions you all may have.
So, so just for clarity, they're not recommending, the planning commission didn't recommend not having it in all agricultural uses, only places that are currently operating as it, because they, they're okay with A-10, et cetera, et cetera?
Yes, sir, so it still would apply to the A-10 zoning district. The language that they added is on page 259 in blue. What they wanted to clarify is that if you are enrolled in a land use deferral program, or you can demonstrate that you are a working farm, you can have a pile of scrap material or that kind of thing that supports your farming operation, but it would still apply to an agricultural property that's just used for single-family purposes or that kind of thing.
That's good. Comments?
I'll have some more problems, you can do the public hearing first.
I'm sorry, yeah, okay, so we'll open the public hearing on this. If anybody would like to speak, please come on down. Thank you for being patient.
Yes, ma'am. One very simple addition to, it's the line where the third where as is, where it describes trash, and I, I think it would help you in enforcement in the long run if you add tires to that line.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, sir.
May I ask a question of the county administrator, county attorney?
Yes, sir.
Any problem with adding tires?
No.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yep, nope. Yeah, I guess, I thought he might want to come down. All right, nobody else wants to comment? Then we'll go ahead and close this public hearing.
So, so, Madam Chair, I have a couple of questions, just want, for clarity, I understand. So, this would not preclude our junk car ordinance?
No, the junk car ordinance is a, actually not part of the zoning ordinance, it's a separate part of the county code, as is the existing language regarding trash and debris.
Okay, all right.
As a zoning administrator, I typically support the county in enforcing that, but it's not actually part of the zoning ordinance.
So do we need, I guess it brings another question, should we make it part of the zoning ordinance?
No, and this is what I.
I mean, it basically says that cars, junk cars have to be screened from the road, correct?
Right, depending on your zoning district.
Depending on your zoning district. And, and you're saying that because it's not part of the zoning ordinance, it's hard for you to enforce?
Not the junk cars, the, the trash ordinance in chapter 68 or whatever it is, has a high standard, or a very low standard, it has to be a significant public safety hazard. So someone with a pile of old toys in the backyard is not necessarily a safety hazard, but it's unsightly, and we get, receive complaints about that. So this helps us get at the properties that have a lot of junk that aren't necessarily a safety hazard, they're just unsightly.
And you, and you feel this will give you the ability to have to go out and enforce an ordinance, correct?
Yes, sir, I think it is more flexibility.
And do you anticipate, and do you anticipate having tons of this to do? You just described toys in the backyard, or?
Or there'll be a few.
There'll be some, a few, some rather significant cases that will take significant staff time.
I know where some are, and I agree with the tires.
We are, we are a complaint-based enforcement agency, so we don't go around driving, looking for these things, although in my personal time, I do see them. It's more of, as we receive complaints.
Would, would you be okay if we added tires in?
I think if you added tires, it would be in the definition in section 83-521. It could read, dump heap shall mean any lot on which trash, debris, garbage, or other waste, tires, it would be in that definition section to make it enforceable.
Yep, I think that's a good idea. Do we agree?
Madam Chairman, I move that we approve 0219-15 with the addition of tires. Sergeant.
Alrighty.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nordvig?
Aye.
Mrs. Cavill?
Aye.
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 Excellent, all right. That brings us to our final comment period, public comment period. This is the last of our public comment periods. We invite members of the public to share your thoughts and matters on issues that are germane to our county business. If, this is not a forum for political campaigning or promoting a business, please keep your comments focused on the matters which we have dominion over. Keep your comments to three minutes, five, if you're speaking for a group, and state your name and address, and don't forget to sign in. So if you would like to comment, please come down now. Going once, twice, no more public comments. Alrighty, Mr. Latchney?
No comments.
Mr. Voorhees?
I just appreciate the board working with us on the schedule for the, for the budget. Sounds like we've got a good plan to, to be able to come together timely.
Great, and board comments?
Just one quick one, if, in case you didn't see on Facebook, which I don't do a lot of, but I did have somebody pointing out to me, and it was also on the local news, we had two young children that were lost in the woods. They called the sheriff's office after searching for a while, that was getting late in the evening, K-9 Bane came, and within 15 minutes, he had found the two young men, I say children, I don't know if they were young, and back, back to the house they were, and he went back to work. So, you know, to the sheriff's point, sometimes those things can be costly, but when you get a situation like that, it's well worth every penny you spend. So, thank you, Sheriff, for all y'all do. That's all I have.
Any other comments?
Yes, I would like to again thank the board tonight for taking action on the abandoned house, and I can't thank you enough because you really are going to make a lot of people happy in that neighborhood this evening. So again, thank you.
Good, all right. Mr. Tucker, anything? All right, so we do not have a closed meeting tonight, so.
Wait a minute.
Do we?
I, I saw an email that there was one, one matter. I, I was asked at the budget workshop, not last Monday, but the previous Monday, to schedule a closed session for this meeting for personnel matter.
Alrighty, well then will you take us into that?
All right. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Powhatan County desires to discuss enclosed meeting the following, discussion consideration reviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees or employees of the public body specifically in emergency management, and whereas pursuant to section 2.237-11A1 of the Code of Virginia, such discussions may occur in closed meeting. Now therefore be resolved that a Board of Supervisors of Powhatan County does hereby authorize discussion of four stated matters in closed meeting, need that as a motion.
So moved. Sergeant.
Reconvene is this regulars meeting of the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors in open meeting, and request the clerk of the board to conduct a roll call certification vote of the supervisors to be included in the minutes of this meeting.
Board members, do you certify to the best of your knowledge that the only matters discussed in the closed meeting were public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting just conducted? Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nordvig?
Aye.
Mrs. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Milton?
Aye.
Mr. Tucker?
Aye, move adjourned.
Yep, we are adjourned, thank you very much.
At 9:25 PM.